Okay. Go ahead, Tim.
Okay, welcome everyone to the Plastow Planning Board meeting of Wednesday, June 17th. The Plastow Planning Board, due to the COVID-19 crisis and in accordance with Governor Sununu's Emergency Order Number 12, pursuant to Executive Order 2020-04, is authorized to meet electronically, and these reasons shall be reflected in the minutes. Notice of this electronic meeting was sent to all abutters and published in the Eagle Tribune newspaper. Planning Board is using GoToWebinar program of the GoToMeeting platform for this electronic meeting. All members of the Board have the ability to communicate contemporaneously with the meeting throughout the GoToWebinar program, and if the public has access to contemporaneously listen and, if necessary, participate in this meeting. The link to access this meeting is, I will read it here, but you can find it on the Plastow website under Planning Board. If you have difficulty clicking on the link, you may need to cut and paste the link into your web browser. It's strongly suggested to test the link in advance of the meeting to make sure you're able to access it. There's a raise-your-hand feature of the program that will allow attendees to participate in the discussion. There's also a Q&amp;A box for the public to type questions during the meeting. Public can also send emails with questions and concerns prior to and during the meeting to divos@plasto.com. Please note, all questions and concerns typed into the Q&amp;A box or sent via email will be read aloud to become part of the public record. Meeting will also be live on Plastow Access Cable Channel 17 and will be live streaming on the town's website.
Mr. Chairman, I have two raised hands in the attendee box right now. One from Sanaaz Anthony and one from Scott Hogan. I can unmute them for you one at a time if you'd like to take them at this point.
All right.
Shouldn't we follow the agenda, Tim? We're not answering questions right now.
I didn't hear that clearly.
I don't know why they're raising their hands. They may be having trouble hearing. That's why I was going to unmute them to make sure that it's not a technical...
Mr. Hogan, you're unmuted.
Did you have something?
I just wanted to make sure that I was actually participating, and at whatever point is relevant, I'd like to just chime in when we get to our agenda item.
You have the ability to raise your hand at that point in time, sir.
Thanks very much.
You're welcome.
All right. Continuing then, since this is our first meeting since the election, I'd like to welcome Karen Robinson to the Planning Board. Looking forward to working with Karen on our program for the rest of this year and throughout her term.
Thank you, Tim.
So Karen, welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Excuse me, Tim. We probably do need to do a roll call.
Would you like me to do roll call now, Mr. Moore?
Yes, I was getting to that. And I was going to also add, as Dee calls your name, if you could respond whether or not you're here, obviously, and whether you're participating remotely or at the town hall. So with that, Dee, I'll ask you to do the roll call.
Thank you, Tim. I also have to know if you are participating remotely, you need to disclose if there is somebody in the room with you. Tim Moore?
Yes, participating remotely and just me in the room.
Jim Peck?
Here.
Lori Mallett?
Here at Town Hall.
Karen Robinson?
Here at Town Hall.
Thank you. Francine Hart?
Here, participating remotely, and I am alone.
Jeff Adams?
Here, in the hall.
Greg Talion?
Here remotely, and I'm alone.
I'll also note for the record that John Cashel, Attorney Charles Clary, and Steve Keach of Keach Nordstrom Associates, Planning Board Review Engineer, are also here for the record. Gentlemen, are you participating remotely or in person? John Cashel?
In person, Town Hall.
Charles Clary?
I'm participating remotely, and I am in the room alone.
Steve Keach?
I'm participating remotely, and I'm alone.
Thank you.
All right, thanks, Steve. First item on the agenda is reorganization. So we'll start that off with nominations for the chair.
I'd like to make a...
Open nominations. Is there any, are there any nominations for Planning Board Chair?
I make a nomination for Jim Peck as chair.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear who that was.
Lori Mallett.
Thank you.
I second it.
Okay, we have a question and a second. Are there any other nominations? Okay, nominations are closed.
Mr. Chairman, is there a discussion on this before we vote?
I guess we can have a discussion, yeah.
So I guess I have absolutely no question in my mind that Jim is more than capable of being the Chair of the Planning Board. My concern and my question to all of you is that for the last three years, the Chair of the Planning Board is also the Chair of the CIP Committee, and that's been listed in our town report. Do you understand that the Chair of the Planning Board can appoint a CIP Chair? But I guess my concern to you personally, Jim, is that you have not participated in any of the CIP Committee work, and I have a concern that you should perhaps at least get onto that committee and just have a good understanding of what it's about because it's incredibly complex, and we've done a huge amount of work on it. So I would just express my caution and concern on that.
Okay, any further discussion?
Can I respond, Tim?
All right. Okay.
Okay. I didn't hear a lot of what you said, Francine, because you were breaking up. I didn't hear a lot of what you said, but the gist of what I heard was you said that you thought I would be a good Chair, but you were concerned about the CIP Chair and the... My understanding of the rules and procedures of the Planning Board is that the Chair can be the Chair of the CIP or can be on the CIP or designate someone to be on the CIP. So I would ask, Tim, if I designated you as CIP, would you do it?
Yeah, were you asking me, Jim, Mrs. Tim?
Yes, I'm asking if you would be still on the CIP. You basically are the brains of the CIP for the town, and you've done it for years. Well, I think I could do it. Just in responding to Francine's point, the rules and procedures do allow the Chair to designate someone, and I look around the table, and you're the man I would designate. I couldn't possibly do what you do. You've done it for many years, and you do it well. So I'm just asking you if you would be okay with continuing on in that role.
Yes, I would do that.
Okay. So for that reason, Francine, are you all set on that, or are there other concerns that you have?
The only other concern or request that I would make is that you be, well, you actually, as the Chair of the Planning Board, you would have to be a member of the CIP Committee. So if you could add that onto your list, I think that would be really helpful.
There are, actually, there's another member. I think Lori's the other member now, and Jeff is the alternate. So there are two others. If you think that's a good idea, as you know, I ran a budget for Bank of America, a $30 billion budget, so I had some experience, just a little bit, in that realm. So I know, it's not a municipal. That's what concerns me. I don't have Tim's experience in municipal, as everybody knows, municipal is a different animal. But I wouldn't have any problem being the member along with Tim, and then Tim could put me under his wing and teach me the ropes, you know, going forward. And there will be an alternate. I know Jeff was the alternate, so if that's okay with you, Francine.
No, it's not that it's not okay or okay. It was just a concern and a comment that I had, that I thought it would be appropriate and important for you to do that for your work. So, you know, it was just a comment.
Okay. I'm all set, Tim. Go, take it away.
Okay.
Tony, are you moving that?
Yes.
So I neglected to mention that the opening, that all motion, I need a roll call vote. Ask Dee to do the roll call. When your name is called, state the person that you would like to have as Chair. Since Jim is the only one, it's pretty obvious, but we need to go through the roll call anyway. So Dee, if you would start that.
Tim Moore?
Jim Peck.
Jim Peck?
Let me see. Jim Peck.
Lauren Mallett?
Jim Peck.
Karen Robinson?
Jim Peck.
Francine Hart?
Jim Peck.
Congratulations, Jim, new Chair, and I'll pass the gavel to you. And your first responsibility will be to open nominations for Vice Chair and continue with the rest of the agenda.
Okay, thanks, Tim. I will open the nomination for Vice Chair, and I just want to say one thing. As Chair, I do want to say that I have a platform, if you will. You know, I've learned a lot in the two years that I've been on the Planning Board. I have been a chairman of various boards. I'm the Chair of the Plastow Public Library right now, and I've been Chair of a number of other boards, so I think I know how to run a meeting. I know the right to know law pretty well. A couple of things that I'd like to do is make sure everything is transparent under the law. Now, transparency can only go so far, but I am very much in favor of having things open to the public as much as we can within the law. The second thing is I am looking forward to protecting the rights of landowners, developers, as well as abutters. Thirdly, I want to make sure that all planning members, Planning Board members, are well-informed and that they get the training that they need. Fourthly, I look forward to working closely with Mr. Cashel, who's been here for two years, almost?
Year and a half.
Year and a half, and he's brought his experience, forty-some-odd years' experience.
I'm sorry, that microphone is breaking up horribly right now.
I'm doing the best I can, Dee.
Mr. Chair, that microphone is breaking up horribly.
If you move the microphone to his desk, it will be a lot better.
Sorry about that.
They're all using the same one.
No, but you just need to move it around. We have the same problems in the BOS meeting.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Much better.
Yep.
Okay, I'm sorry about that. All right, let's see how long my voice lasts this way.
I caught most of what you said, though.
I look forward to working closely with the planning staff, not just Mr. Cashel, but also Dee and all the other staff that we have. And lastly, trying to adapt to the new normal, like going to a meeting and have to shout. We need to do something about it, and I know Dean's on it, and I trust in Dean getting it fixed, but this is a little bit too much. So that's that. I'll open up the discussion on a Vice Chair. My bias is I think Tim would be perfect. I know Francine can't be.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, I need to interrupt. I have a raised hand. Mr. Chair, I need to interrupt. I have a raised hand.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you, Dee.
It's raised hand.
I have a raised, I have a raised hand in the attendees.
Okay, who is it?
It's Doug Matisas. I apologize if I'm not pronouncing the name right, but I do have a raised hand.
Who is it?
I'm going to unmute his microphone to see what the question is.
If we could hold off, it's somebody from ProQuip. If it's a hearing issue, we're doing the best we can. I'd like to hold off while we do the nominations unless the question, whoever's asking the question, if it's about the nomination, I'll entertain it, but if it's not, please take off the question.
The only way for me to know is to unmute them, and that's what I've done. You may go ahead, Mr. Matisas. Hello? Hello? You've been unmuted. Do you have a question? I put the mute back on.
Do you hear anybody, Tim? I mean, Dee?
No, I couldn't hear anybody.
Can I make a suggestion?
Sure.
Dee?
I heard some background.
Dee, can you hear me?
Yes.
Dee, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Just so that we conduct the proceedings as smoothly as possible, when we're conducting a particular item and the Chairman is speaking or any member of the Planning Board is speaking, you don't have to interrupt with somebody raising their hand. We will get to them or you will get to them appropriately during the meeting, but just please don't interrupt because somebody's raising their hand. We will get to questions and answers as we go along. Is that all right?
I agree. That's a very good suggestion.
Yeah.
Okay, so let's move forward here with the Vice Chairman nomination. As I said, I'm a big fan of having Tim around with his knowledge, and I really appreciate it. I know Francine can't be the Vice Chair. Karen is relatively new, and Lori, I've had some discussion with Lori. So, Tim, I'm going to ask someone to nominate Tim.
I'll nominate Tim Moore as Vice Chair of the Planning Board.
I will second it.
So we have a nomination from Lori Mallett and a second from Karen Robinson. Is there any discussion? Tim, are you okay with that, by the way?
Well, I guess thank you for the nomination. I was hoping that someone else would be willing to step up. I mean, I'll certainly be around to answer questions when it's really hoping that someone else would like to step up.
No, I hear you. Like I said, Francine can't do it, and Karen's new, so that leaves it up to Lori, and so why don't you comment?
I don't have any interest in being the Vice Chair, to be honest with you, Tim.
Can't hear.
Can't hear her.
She said no.
Thank you.
So, Tim, so if you don't have any objection, we'll move forward with the nomination. I suppose you could always decline it, but we could vote, and we'll see how the vote comes out. Mr. Cashel has a point.
Tim, you know, just as being staff, and I just want to suggest to you, you are a member that's constantly at meetings or most consistently at meetings, and obviously you have the experience necessary. And under all the circumstances involved, I really believe that you are the true nominee, perhaps the only nominee at this point in time that should be considered for Vice Chair, and I would strongly suggest and request that you accept the nomination.
Thank you, Mr. Cashel. Any other comments before we vote? There being none, I call for a vote. I guess a roll call. We're doing all roll calls, so Dee, if you could call the roll.
Jim Peck?
Tim Moore.
Lori Mallett?
Tim Moore.
Tim Moore?
Tim Moore.
Karen Robinson?
Tim Moore.
Francine Hart?
Tim Moore.
Okay, if I listen correctly, that's 500. So, Tim, congratulations, and I look forward to working with you. With that, I'll move on to the next item on the agenda. We do have some committees. I know we have a representative to the Rockingham Planning Commission, and I was going to ask you a question, Tim. It's not on the agenda, but I assume those are still active terms. They're four-year terms. And from my notes, Julian Kiska, yourself, and Greg is the, Greg Talon is the alternate to the RPC, so we don't need to vote on that, Tim?
No.
Well, no, we do. Julian Kiska's term is up next year, in 2021. My term expires this year, in 2020, and for some reason, when Greg replaced Steve Ranlet, we never got the paperwork to the RPC. So just to kind of close that loop, we really need to have the Planning Board recommend the regular member and an alternate for the Board of Selectmen and request that they appoint those people as RPC representatives from Plastow.
So, Tim, would it be your recommendation to have the same three recommended, Julian, yourself, and Greg Talon?
Yeah, it's just myself and Greg.
Oh, that's right, because Julian's not expired. Okay, well, I agree with that. I guess this is a recommendation to the Board of Selectmen because the Board of Selectmen has to approve our recommendation for this particular position. So I'll entertain a motion to nominate, as Tim said, Tim Moore and Greg Talon. I guess Greg is the alternate, Tim?
Yeah, myself as the regular member and Greg as the alternate.
Okay. So I'll entertain a motion to that effect.
I'll second it.
No, I can't, I didn't, I'm not making the motion I'm asking for.
Oh, yeah, so moved.
Okay, so moved.
All right, so Karen, so moved and second from Lori Mallett.
I got you.
So the motion is to nominate Tim Moore as a member of the representative to the RPC for a four-year term, which would expire in 2024, and Greg Talon as the alternate with an expiration of the same date. Any discussion? There being none, I call for a vote. Roll call, Dee, please.
Jim Peck?
I favor that motion, yes.
Tim Moore?
Yes.
Was that me?
I can't hear.
Was that, did she say? Oh, yes.
I can't hear.
Yeah, she said yes.
I said yes.
Francine Hart?
Yes, and I will make sure that it goes on the Board of Selectmen's agenda for approval at our next meeting on July 13.
Yes.
I don't think you called Jeff, did you?
No.
I mean Karen. Karen?
There's only five.
Only five. She called her.
There's only five running members.
Okay, I didn't hear you call Karen. Maybe I'm missing something, but I didn't hear that.
Karen, you made the motion.
I'm pretty sure you told me she said yes.
Yes. Oh, I see.
Oh, there was a mix up there. We thought you were asking about Lori, but you were asking about her. She didn't vote, so anyway, everybody's voted, so I'll declare it a 500 in favor of that motion. The other thing we need to do, Tim, give me some advice here. There's a Transportation Advisory Committee for the RPC. You're the representative. Is that, do you have a term on that, or is that, do we need to do that at all?
I don't think we need to do that at all. That was already voted on in the letter sent to RPC, so we're good there.
Okay, thank you. I just thought I'd bring it up while we were talking about motions here, not to hold everybody up on the call here. Okay, so let's move on to the CIP Committee assignments. We need a Chair, and as I said before, the Chair can be the Chair of the Planning Board or his designee, and so I'm designating Tim, who said before that he'd do it. And I guess we can vote in a block here if we want to. As far as a member, I would be a member. I'm volunteering to be a member. And Jeff, do you want to still be the alternate? Okay, so we have a slate here. If someone wants to make the motion, Tim is the Chair, is the Representative who becomes the Chair. Sorry, myself is a member and Jeff is the alternate. So I don't want to make these motions, so I'm asking somebody. You can just say so moved.
So moved, okay.
All right, Karen said move the motion, and I'll ask for a second.
I'll second it.
Second from Lori. I don't think there's going to be any discussion, but I'll ask. No discussion, let's vote again with a roll, Dee.
Jim Peck?
Yes.
Tim Moore?
Yes.
Lori Mallett?
Yes.
Karen Robinson?
Yes.
Francine Hart?
Yes.
Okay, the eyes have it, 500, and that takes care of that. Number two on the agenda. The next item on the agenda is review and approval of March 4th minutes, three months ago. Believe it or not, that's the last meeting we had before this crisis took hold. So hopefully, everybody's had a chance to read the minutes. If so, I'll entertain a motion to approve those minutes of those who were at that meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of March 4th.
Motion by Lori. I'll have a second, anyone?
I'll second.
Francine seconds it. Any discussion or changes to these minutes? There being none, I call for another roll call. This is fun. Dee, another roll call.
Jim Peck?
Yes.
Tim Moore?
Yes.
Lori Mallett?
Yes.
Karen Robinson?
Abstain.
I'm sorry, abstain?
Abstain? Yeah, I wasn't there.
Talking to the microphone.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Did I hear an abstention?
That's an abstention from Karen Robinson.
Just speaking to the mic. You were talking to the...
Thank you. Francine Hart? Yes.
So that's 401. Okay, the motion passes. Okay, we finally made it, 707. We're at the first public hearing. The next item on the agenda is public hearing PB 20-03, and I'll read this for everybody's benefit. If you have it in front of you, you can follow along with me. This public hearing is the completeness of an application from Exeter Med Real, Inc. The plan proposes an amendment to the site plan that would alter the business hours of operation from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., Monday through Sunday, to 6:30 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., Monday through Sunday. The amended site plan will also show the field changes made during construction. The property is located at 127 Plastow Road, tax map 29, Lot 58, in the Commercial One District. The applicant is the property owner of record. If the application is found to be complete, the Planning Board may immediately conduct the public hearing. So I think what's in order, looking at the staff report, is if we believe that the application is complete, we can have that motion, I think, is in the staff report. You can just read that motion, unless someone believes that the application is not complete. So I'm looking for a motion that's in the staff report.
I'll make a motion that we accept the application as complete.
I'll second it.
Motion by Tim, second by Lori. Any discussion? There being none, I call for another roll call vote, Dee?
Excuse me, may we have, okay, never mind, go ahead. Okay, never mind, go ahead.
On a remote meeting, you had to do all roll call votes.
They all have to be that way.
That's what it's good.
Yes, you do.
I think she was going to tell you I had left the room momentarily. My doorbell rang, I apologize. Jim Peck. Tim Moore.
Yes.
Lori Mallett.
Yes.
Karen Robinson.
Yes.
Francine Hart.
Yes.
She say no?
No, she said yes.
Okay. All right, so that's a 5-0-0 vote. The application is complete, so let's move forward. Declare the public hearing open for this matter. And I believe one of the persons up there is the applicant. Is that true, Dee?
We need to turn off somebody's webcam so we can put Chris back on his webcam. It was Chris Raymond. Mr. Keith, can we turn off your webcam for just a minute? Do you mind?
No, I do not mind.
Okay.
Was it Chris?
Yeah.
He was there.
But they took him off because we couldn't see.
Is there enough pictures? Is that what it is?
Yeah.
We're waiting for Chris. I know he was on when I got here at 6 o'clock, so.
There he is.
Yeah, there he is.
Can you guys hear me okay?
Yeah. Did you step out for a bite, Chris? Go ahead, Chris. We just read the public hearing, so you're on to tell us why you want to change the hours.
Yep. Okay, great. Thank you, guys. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board. My name is Chris Raymond from TEC Engineering. I'm here on behalf of my client, Exeter Med Real. Joining me today are Phil Chouput and Colin Lavery from Exeter Med Real. We're here to discuss a minor change to the previously approved hours of operation of the recently constructed medical office building located at 127 Plastow Road. Just for a quick overview, this project was approved by the planning board back in December of 2018. Construction was started in June of 2019, and now, just over a year later, we are entering our final.
You all check, Chris?
...in town staff, who have been so helpful throughout the permitting and construction of the project thus far. What brings us here today is we are seeking a minor amendment to the hours of operation that were on the previously approved plan. We're seeking to change these hours from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. to 6:30 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., and that would be daily, Monday to Sunday. We are aware of the recent staff report that was submitted, outlining a few minor suggestions to be added to the final plan. And those, I'd like to just run through those really quick. Those minor suggestions were to change the lot designation from 57 and 58 to just 58, as these lots were consolidated as part of the 2018 approved site plan. The second suggestion was in the issued for block that reads amended site plan above the title block, just to add hours of operation and construction field changes. And the third suggestion was the word proposed be eliminated from the project title, as this is no longer a proposed medical facility. It's an approved plan and constructed building. And so, we're hoping that the board agrees with this minor change to the hours of operation, and would like to...
Okay, thank you, Chris.
...for approval. Additionally, we wanted to take this opportunity just to incorporate a few minor construction changes into the updated plan, just to make sure these got memorialized. These three small changes included a minor change to the layout of the site water service, and this was coordinated and approved with the Town Plastow Water Department. Second, we made an adjustment to the dumpster pad during final design of this structure. And lastly, we swapped the locations of the generator and transformer. These were located directly next to each other, but during final electric coordination, we just mirrored their locations. So, we just wanted to make sure those got memorialized in the re-submitted plan. So, in closing, I would just like to reiterate that we are here simply to adjust the hours of operation of this facility from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. to 6:30 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. And with that, I'd like to thank the board for their time this evening, and we look forward to wrapping up construction and providing the Town of Plastow with a brand-new medical facility. So, thank you, guys, very much.
Thank you, Chris. Okay, I'll open it up to questions from the board. Lori?
All right, Mr. Chair, I have several questions, but I'll wait my turn.
Yeah, go ahead, Francine.
Well, I thought you recognized me.
Chris, can you give us a specific reason as to why you are adjusting the hours down to 6:30 in the morning?
So, actually, is Phil on the line here? I'd like to have him answer this. It has to do with one of the occupants. I know they'll be, you know, conducting some patient procedures and therapy. So, they just want time for the occupants. It would just be a handful of people and potentially a handful of clients getting in so that they could get in before work hours. I know they like to get some people in before the workday. So, it would just be to allow a little more time for that to happen.
All right, so can you specifically state on the record that the 6:30 a.m. opening would not be for the urgent care piece of the process that you were considering? Yes or no question?
Yes, yes, yes. I'd like... If Phil's on the line, if he could jump in here, or Colin, if Colin's...
I sent him.
Okay, I got a question from Lori Mallett.
When I was on the board when this came before us, and it was never disclosed to us that there was going to be an urgent care center there, we were told that it was going to be doctors' hours. To me, doctors' hours are about 8 to 5. And we were not aware that this was going to be weekends either.
I'm sorry, I'm having a very difficult time hearing Ms. Mallett.
Okay. What I said, Dee, is that I was on the board when we approved this plan, and I attended every meeting, and it was never disclosed to the board that there would be an urgent care center at this location. And we were told it would be doctors' hours, and that was one of the concerns of the abutters in that neighborhood. We were not told that it would also be weekends. I don't know if any of the abutters are on here tonight, but I would like to hear from them.
Okay. Let's hold that, and any other questions from the board? I have a comment to make as well. I sat through all those meetings as well, and I went back and watched the tape. And I have to be honest with you. I don't remember the term urgent care being brought up. That's not to say that the plan wasn't approved for certain hours. Now, when I went out to look at the plan that's filed, it does say 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. That's the plan that was signed off by our chairman, Tim Moore. So, that's what was approved. The only thing that concerns me is the plan that's actually officially filed with the Rockingham deeds does not say that it is Monday through Sunday. And I know, Dee, you said that it's a fault to that because it doesn't say that, and I guess that makes sense. But I have to tell you that personally, I don't remember... I know we talked about doctors' hours, and I went back and I found some things about that. But I'm a little bit concerned here that, and I do want to hear from the abutters, what will happen. I'm also concerned that the fire department wasn't asked to give their input here. I did see Chief Knutson. He signed us in today. He gave us the questions. And I talked to him briefly about it, but it wasn't official or anything. He did say that if it's currently 7 to 7, and we go to 6:30 to 8, he would have to assess what the impact would be for that extra hour and that extra half hour. He didn't think the half hour in the morning would have an impact. But that was kind of an unofficial input from him. So, I would have liked to have the fire department here to comment on the hours. I know it sounds, you know, a little bit mundane. You're going only an hour and a half different each day. But on the other hand, you know, we have some concerns about, you know, the abutters. So, I'll just leave it at that and open it up to any other questions from the board or comments.
Just to let you know, there are no raised hands among attendees, and the abutters were notified by certified mail of this public hearing, and I don't have any raised hands.
Okay.
So, Dee, I just want to make clear here. So, this is a public hearing to officially amend what was approved previously by the planning board, correct?
Correct.
All right, so...
I do have a message from the attendees, and it's very difficult to hear, Mr. Peck.
You know, and just to continue with what I'm saying...
Oh, I know.
So, we accepted the application this evening.
Right.
And the board should take into consideration any of your concerns, and if any of your concerns should be consulted with more formally...
Right.
...with town staff, that being the fire department, the police chief. And, you know, this is a public hearing. This isn't a matter that has to be decided tonight.
No, I understand. I just, I want to make sure we have all the input from the board. I'm expressing my experience, and so is Lori, as a member. And I want to get the input from the whole board. You know, Francine, I don't know if you have any further comments, but before we move to the abutters, go ahead.
I was removed from your meeting, so you won't see me. But I do want to point out that I believe 6:30 is in the middle of a shift change for the fire department, which could cause issues. And if, in fact, an urgent care facility is going to be installed in this medical building, I'm also concerned about the abutters being disturbed. And other urgent care facilities' timeframes are usually 8 to 8, because I went online and I looked at a bunch of them. So, I am really not comfortable with the 6:30 opening for a myriad of reasons, and that's my comment.
Mr. Casual?
Yeah, I have a question to the applicant. Is there going to be ambulance service to and from this urgent care facility? Or would ambulances go to a hospital setting, and they're not involved with this urgent care facility?
That was my question.
That was to the applicant.
Did you hear the question, Chris?
Mr. Chouput is trying to answer.
Do you need me to restate that?
Yes.
One of the issues I'd like to have you clarify relative to the urgent care facility. Will this facility facilitate ambulance service? Or is it just outpatient?
It's walk-in predominantly. There may be an occasional ambulance, but it would just be picking up a patient and bringing them to the hospital if needed.
I mean, this is the one issue, again, that wasn't part of the original proceedings in urgent care facility at this particular facility that was approved. So, ambulance services coming in and out do pose a noise factor relative to the residential area that abuts it. So, that's one of the concerns with this. So, we need to clarify that as part of this public hearing proceedings. Are we going to... Or is the community going to experience ambulance service to and from with the idea of having sirens involved? So, there is a noise factor that would come into play with the abutters that, you know, was never planned for originally. Can we have a response?
This is Phil again. As I mentioned...
Is this question something that you need to think about and for us to defer to another meeting?
My understanding from Clear Choice that it is strictly an ambulatory, and there would be an occasional ambulance, if needed, to bring a patient to the hospital. And we can certainly control their sirens as to when they turn them on, when they turn them off. So, I'm not seeing an issue, but maybe I'm missing something.
Who's speaking? Could you identify yourself?
May I speak, Mr. Chair?
Go ahead, Francine.
Okay. I guess my concern is if there is going to be an urgent care at this facility, and you're opening it up at 6:30 in the morning, there is a likely scenario that there will be ambulance in the morning, potentially. And again, I will reiterate that most urgent care facilities do not open until 8 o'clock in the morning. So, while I personally have no problem with the 8:00 p.m. closing, I do have an issue with the 6:30 in the morning, especially if there's going to be an urgent care facility there, unless you...
Okay. This is Jim Peck.
Yeah. All right, good to go.
We're getting some flashing on the screen. This is Jim Peck, the chair. I'd just like to seize control of the meeting again. Who was it that spoke for Exeter Med that... I didn't think it was Chris. It was someone else speaking?
No, it was Chris.
Phil Chouput.
Okay. All right, any other comments from the board? Who was that?
This is Phil. I have a clarification on the hours.
Go ahead, Phil.
Okay. The urgent care is 8 to 8. The only 6:30 hours, as Chris mentioned, would be for physical therapy. So, urgent care is 8 to 8, that's a given. The only early hours would just be physical therapy, the 6:30 hours.
All right. Is that something that we can put on the site plan so that we have documentation for it?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Who's going to monitor it, physical therapy?
Phil, did you hear that question?
Chris answered, he could.
Absolutely, yeah, we can add that.
Okay, then I'm good.
Any other questions from the board? Okay, so I'll open it up to any members of the public. I'll just give it a minute or so for anybody who wants to click the raise your hand. Do we have anybody out there, Dee?
No, I just scrolled up and down. I see no questions. I see no raised hands.
Okay. No questions from Noah Butters out there? It's not.
I'm scrolling again.
Okay.
I see no additional questions.
All right, no additional questions. Any further comments from the applicant or... Go ahead, Lori.
Well, I'd like to hear from Chief Knutson before we move forward with this. I would like to continue this meeting. I don't know if I can make a motion to continue it, or the chair decides that. I don't know.
I'm sorry, I can't hear anything that's being said right now.
Okay, so I don't know if it's... If a board member can make a motion to continue this until we hear further from staff, mainly Chief Knutson? Is that something I can make a motion to continue it?
I think you can make that motion. Tim, is that correct? She can make that motion, Tim? Tim, can Lori make a motion to continue the hearing?
I don't see why not.
Now, I just want to go back to the applicant again. We're not trying to cause any issues, but, you know, we do have some legitimate questions here. We're meeting again, I believe, what, July 15th? Is that right, Dee?
Yes.
So, if you don't have any objections, I'll... You know, Lori will make that motion, and we'll just move it to then. And in the interim, I think what we're asking is that the fire department gets a look at this, and you guys address some of the questions you've heard tonight. Does that sound fair or not fair?
Is that something that could be added as a condition? Is that we get a... From the fire department, you know, stating their approval and that they were okay with it?
That's not what we're talking about. We're talking about an official input. They look at all the material and they make a, you know, they make a recommendation to us on this matter. So I think that's what we're saying. Any, any further comments?
We, we also have a 65, once we accept it, as, once we accept this application is complete, we have a 65-day window to approve it. Is that not correct, Mr. Cashel?
That's correct. The other thing, if I could just mention, when you're, when the fire chief is, when the fire department is reviewing, just have them comment on the location of the dumpsters to make sure that they're properly located.
I would like to point out to the board that the fire department did review this original plan when it came to the board. And I do understand the hours of operation are changing, but they did review this entire site plan and made comment to the board that they had no issues at that time. And I'd be happy to send that back out to the board. But everything else about the site plan, the fire department was okay with.
Okay, Laurie?
The site plan, the, Dee, when that was approved, and we got, we got this.
This is Phil's report, another comment.
When that site plan was approved, it was with interim chief Judson, and the information about the urgent care center was not on that site plan. So we did not get feedback from our fire chief on an urgent care center, only medical office buildings.
Can I just, I just want to make one more comment.
We're passing this little thing around so you can hear us.
Yeah, I think everybody's in agreement that, you know, most communities of the size of Plastow do have urgent care facilities. No one is suggesting that it's a, you know, an unfriendly use to introduce to that particular site. However, it was never part of the original site plan review. And no one is really that familiar with these urgent care facilities, that we have all the information already available within our experience. So we'd like to get more information about this particular proposal and the extensiveness of, of the proposal. You know, if we give permission tonight, and, you know, it turns out to be a very successful urgent care facility, you know, will it double in size? You know, you know, there are lots of questions that we need answered, because originally, this project was approved as standard medical offices. That's what it was going to consist of. And there was no introduction, and I think Chairman Peck brought that up tonight, there was no introduction to the idea that an urgent care facility was going to be included as part of it. So it is new. And this is a site plan application to amend what was previously approved. There are some physical changes, minor in nature, but, you know, this is a public hearing, it's an initial public hearing, and there is no obligation to, on the board's part, to rush this thing through. I think it should be thoroughly vetted as, as experienced tonight or expressed tonight. That's just my opinion.
Thank you, Mr. Cashel. I do also want to point out that we're not against urgent care. I mean, I can speak for myself. I mean, urgent care is needed.
We need that.
There's no question about that. And it's zoned for urgent care. So we're not saying that at all.
Right.
So I just reiterate what Mr. Cashel said. Karen?
Mr. Chair, Mr. Chair, may I speak?
I'm sorry, I have someone who is recognized here. Francine, hold on.
Yes, I definitely wanted to reinstate that, too, that the urgent care building.
I can't hear.
Okay. The urgent care building is definitely necessary and a need.
I'm sorry, who's speaking? Who's speaking?
Karen Robinson.
Thank you.
The, the actual, you know, of urgent care has been mentioned, and a lot of people in town have wanted this. And when we saw the medical building go up, this is what they were thinking might come with it. But that has not been discussed in hours, or what it contains, what do you do for services, and the hours that you will be working. And we have not been told that much about what the actual urgent care is. That's all we want to know. It's not that we don't want it. It's definitely a necessity. But we need to know more about what you do and what is contained in it.
Okay, pass that back.
Mr. Chair, this is Phil.
Yeah, go ahead.
As I mentioned, the urgent care is an eight to eight operation. The 6:30 operation, we can forego, if you will, pending fire department approval, if that's okay. Maybe just approve, approve the eight to eight, and we'll, we'll discuss the 6:30 with the fire department for that subsequent approval, if that works.
So not 8 o'clock?
Mr. Chair, may I?
I'm sorry, let me answer, Francine. So you're saying not 8 o'clock, but from 6:30 only?
The amendment, I would be willing to amend the amendment. So it just, for this purposes of this, this meeting, it would be strictly just the 8 a.m. to 8 p.m. building, urgent care. And then we would further continue discussions about the 6:30 in the morning start, and then work with the fire department, and kind of peel that away, if you will.
It would be, it'd be 7 a.m. to 8 p.m., right? Because we're already approved for 7 a.m., so.
Right, that's right. So 7 a.m. to 8 p.m., so just the extension and the.
Okay.
Which we'd like to point out, too, that all the businesses around there are open well past 8 p.m.
Okay. So we, we have two, Francine, I'm sorry, you had another comment?
Yes. I just want to reiterate what Karen said to the gentleman, that it's not that we do not want the urgent care facility, but this is going to have a financial and economic and physical impact on our town. We don't know what those parameters are going to be before we just sign off on something. And so while I personally have no issue with the 8 p.m. closing, I do have an issue with the 6:30 in the morning opening. So we really need to put the brakes on this and consider what the impact to the community's going to be for that urgent care, because we really don't know what that is yet.
Tim, do you have any comments?
No, I mean, we have, in the past, done conditional approvals based on getting an acceptable letter from police or fire or, or someone. So it's, you know, not, not out of the ordinary to do that. And we've already, we've learned tonight that the urgent care hours are seven to eight, and that the early, earlier time would only be for physical therapy. The, as I understand it, regarding ambulances, there may be occasion where someone comes in to this facility, or any doctor's office, and develops a serious condition that requires an ambulance to take them away to a hospital. So from that regard, the urgent care facility is no different than a doctor's office, or a dentist's office, or a residence. It wouldn't be a, not a target where ambulances would come into. They would be picking up patients and going to other more intense facilities. So I guess I'm, I'm okay with what they're, with what they're proposing, with the conditional approval that we get an acceptable letter from the fire department.
Laurie Millat has a comment?
The first response would be our rescue before the ambulance got there. And when he was.
I can't hear.
We have to pass this around, we keep forgetting.
The first response would be Plastow's rescue before the ambulance got there. So this could affect our fire budget that we've already set for the year. I don't feel comfortable with approving anything tonight until I hear from the chief.
I just want to point out, this, this was previously approved medical office.
Medical?
Nope. Or medic, it's previously approved medical building. So just to kind of reiterate what, what Tim had just said, you know, it would just be a medical emergency that would warrant an ambulance and, of that, in that nature. So there's not a strain, there's no extra strain being put on in that regard, whether, whether this was an office, or, you know, you could have a medical emergency at a, at a Walmart or a Lowe's. You know, it's, it's kind of the same, same school of thought there.
Is there a?
There's no, there's no planned medical.
Excuse me, is there a timing issue on why, why you couldn't wait till July 15th?
We are just nearing construction. We would like to get, get occupancy as soon as possible, rather than have a, you know, the, the building finish up and have it get, you know, delayed another month because of this. As well as, you know, with everything going on, there's already been so many delays in public hearings and stuff. You know, it is kind of difficult, as we've all kind of seen, to set these up. So anything we could do to, you know, just add a condition and, you know, not have to come back in front of the board and wait a month. These, these seem like all issues that could be hashed out, you know, in a, in a couple of days. So for that reason, we would like to really push the, the conditional approval tonight.
All right, Mr. Cashel, and then Ms. Robinson?
You know, as we're having additional discussion, and perhaps we should have had, you know, more of a presentation. I know these virtual meetings are, you know, they're, they're difficult to present everything that's involved with these applications. But with this additional discussion that we've had in the last five to 10 minutes, I think everybody realizes the urgent care facilities are becoming more commonplace and, you know, very convenient for a multitude of people, whether they're just going to have poison ivy looked at, or, you know, they have a bad cold or whatever. And they're a lot less expensive, and they're, they're more user-friendly time-wise for people, rather than to have to wait to get a doctor's appointment, say, with their primary care physician. I know this is a medical office building. You know, just the unfortunate thing is that this element was not brought up during the original proceedings. But, you know, I do understand, as a planner, that these are becoming real commonplace facilities within communities. They're an important part of many communities, especially in more rural communities, where you have an urgent care facility introduced. That gives people, you know, a better chance for immediate care in whatever their situation is, relative to getting that particular care and going to a more intensive healthcare environment, such as an emergency room in a hospital, as Tim pointed out earlier. So, you know, in retrospect, I'll, I'll walk back my previous concerns, and it doesn't really appear that this particular facility is going to be receiving any type of life-threatening ambulance sirens going and whatnot, and that any patients picked up would, and needing ambulance service, would be picked up. But, you know, it wouldn't be, unless it was a life-threatening situation, you know, sirens going and the ambulance leaving the site at 50, 60, 70 miles an hour on their way to the nearest hospital. So bottom line is, I don't have a problem personally if the board does consider taking action on this, this evening.
Okay, Ms. Robinson?
Okay, I think the first thing that was brought up was really the hours. I think that's a big concern, because whether there is an emergency, or there isn't, or whatever, you know, physical therapy or that, I think 6:30 in the morning is a little early, and I'm questioning why you're different from the others that are eight to eight. And that is exactly what the one in Wyndham, the one in Epping, they all run eight to eight. That is what they do. So I'm just concerned about that, and that's the only thing, that we definitely need you, we definitely want you. But we, I'm questioning the eight to eight, why not?
Pass that up, Pat.
Well, the facility's open.
So I'd like to.
Seven to seven already. It's really a matter of adding the.
Yeah, Dee, just, this is the chair again. I thought I heard 6:30 to 7 was only physical therapy, 6:30 to, 6:30 to 7.
Correct.
Right. So that's the reason there's not, it's not 6:30 for, I guess if it's 6:30, it could be.
And we can break that out on the site plan.
Okay, so we've, we've had quite a bit of discussion here in the, I don't want to cut it off, but I do want to say there, it sounds like there's two possibilities here. We could have a motion that we have in front of us to approve as it's proposed, or we could have an amended motion. So does anyone want to make one of those two motions? And we can see what happens, and we can move to the next motion if that doesn't pass? For example, we could move to accept the application to amend it as, as presented, and see how that goes. And then if that doesn't pass, we can move back to an amended motion. I guess I would suggest that. There is a draft motion there, so if someone wants to make that motion.
I, I will move seven to eight for the hours.
I'm sorry, I can't hear.
No, we, again, we have to pass this around. You have to have some patience, Dee. You have to have some patience, Dee. We have to pass this hockey puck around here. She's got it now. Okay, say that again, Karen?
I will make the motion with the hours seven to eight for the urgent care building.
I think they're only asking eight to eight for the urgent care. Seven to eight would be for the entire facility.
Repeat. Let me see that. This is a lot of fun here with this hockey puck. Karen, can, you can make that motion, Karen, but I was asking for, is if you can make the motion in the staff plan, and I'm not going to dissuade you from making that motion, that's your option, but if we could move as it is in the staff report and see how that vote goes, and then we could have an amended motion. We have a motion here to approve it as it's applied, as they apply. In other words, it would be 6:30 to eight. I'm sorry, who was that?
I'm sorry. Mr. Chairman, you would also have the option to add one more condition to these conditions that would say that the hours of operation for the urgent care can only be eight to eight.
But what I'm trying to do is get the original motion on the floor, see how that goes, and then we can do what you just said. So if someone should make the original motion, I appreciate it.
If you add that condition to this original motion, you don't have to do a second amended one. This is not a motion that's been proposed, it's merely a draft.
If anybody has an amended motion, I'll entertain an amended motion.
I just want to, I want to point out, I want to point out that the, the hours of operation right now are seven to seven. So it wouldn't be a need to have the urgent care facility closed until 8 o'clock. So the, the motion would be to allow for the urgent care facility to be open 7 a.m. to 8 p.m.
Yeah, 8 p.m., right. That's what I said.
And the, the remaining part of the facility is already permitted for 7 a.m. to 7 p.m.
Okay, why don't you give it to Karen, because Karen?
Okay, that's what I thought I said.
Go ahead, I'm sorry, go ahead, make that motion.
Okay. I move that we accept the hours 7 a.m. to 8 p.m. for the urgent care building.
Okay, pass that back. The only thing I would add is if you could put in there, for the hours of operation at 127 Plastow Road, tax map 29, lot 58.
And also list the rest of those conditions so they can be included in the motion.
Okay. Did you understand that?
The, the motion that's prepared in the staff report, as written.
Yes.
So the only amending language is what you just said.
Right, exactly.
Okay.
You have that, Dee?
No, I couldn't hear whoever said that.
Okay.
Can I ask a question?
So the motion consists of the original. So the motion consists of the original draft motion and the staff report, with the only amending language being that the urgent care facility would be allowed to operate between the hours of 7:00 a.m. and 8:00 p.m.
That's fine. I just didn't hear the rest of it stated for the record, so I could include it in the minutes.
Okay, Lori.
Can we conditionally approve that until we hear back from the chief?
You could add an additional condition on here that they need a favorable report from the police, the fire chief.
Okay, now, instead of passing the hockey puck pass to Karen, I'll ask Karen, tell me, are you okay with that?
Yes, I'm okay.
Okay, she said she was okay. You didn't hear her, but trust me, she said she's okay with it. So that's the motion.
May I repeat the motion for the board?
Yes, please.
Yes, please.
The motion would be to approve the application to amend the site plan for the hours of operation at 127 Plastow Road, tax map 2958, with the conditions that the urgent care facility would only operate between 7:00 a.m. and 8:00 p.m. The lot designation of the plan's title block would be changed to reflect lot 58. The title block designated as issue four would be updated to read amended site plan, hours of operation, and construction field changes. We would rerule the word proposed from the project title, and the applicant must obtain a favorable report from the fire.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Francine, what'd you say?
She seconded.
I seconded the motion.
Okay, we have a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
No, you had to roll call.
Oh, roll call. Sorry, roll call.
Tim Peck?
Yes.
Tim Moore?
Yes.
Lori Mallett?
Yes.
Karen Robinson?
Yes.
Francine Hart?
Yes.
Okay, the ayes have it, 500. We have some other items here. I have another motion on the staff report to amend the site plan, or?
No, that's the one you just did.
That was, that was included.
That's already part of it?
That was included.
You're done.
Thank you, Dee. Okay, I guess we're all done, unless anybody has anything else here. Okay, thank you for coming, and we appreciate your time.
Thank you, everybody.
Sorry it took so long.
Have a great night.
Sorry it took so long, and those who've been waiting, we apologize, but we need to get it in, what we need to get in here, so.
Mr. Keach, can we have you turn your webcam back on, please?
Okay, there's the microphone. And there's the webcam, right?
There you are.
Okay. Moving forward, he said, we're moving to the next public hearing, which is PD 20-04, and I'll read it. For the record, for consideration of the Superior Court order dated May 18, 2020 pertaining to the matter Richard and Sinaz Anthony versus Towne Plastow Planning Board, as it relates to any intended planning board involvement under stipulations numbers three and number seven listed in the planning board's conditional approval dated June 19, 2019, the conditionally approved site plan is related to the property located at 143 and 145A Plastow Road, tax map 30, lots 73 and 72, Milton Real Properties of Massachusetts, Proquip. I think, I think we need input, particularly from Attorney Cleary maybe first, and then our engineer, Mr. Keach. So unless anybody has an objections, I would turn it over to Attorney Cleary. He can explain it to us. My understanding is the court is looking for basically clarification. What did we mean by those two stipulations? And I'll turn it over to Attorney Cleary, because he's the legal guy.
Point of order, Mr. Chairman, point of order. I believe we have to open the public hearing first.
I'm sorry, you're absolutely right. I'm opening the public hearing. Basically, when I read that, that's what I meant. But the public hearing is now open, and I'll turn it over to Charlie Cleary.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is Charlie Cleary speaking. One thing you will need to consider is who on the board could be hearing this remand from the court. I think there's been a change in membership since the June 19 decision of last year, and the general rule is you'd like to have those members who were involved in the decision, or who have fully reviewed and become familiar with the application, vote on this remand. But getting to the purpose that we're here for tonight, if you've read the May 18 order of the Superior Court, the court didn't find that the planning board didn't have jurisdiction over the matter because there were, in its opinion, conditions precedent, namely stipulations three and seven in your decision. The court interpreted those stipulations as requiring some additional action on the part of the entire planning board before the decision was final. Now, that may not have been the board's intent. The board, based on its custom and practice, may have been thinking that it was all done, and the conditions three and seven were ministerial, meaning no real discretionary action on the board. But the judge has spoken, and so it's back before the planning board to determine, essentially, does it accept the recommendation of Engineer Keach? The board is certainly entitled to express its view that it did not intend that there are conditions precedent. That's entirely up to the board, they are the ones that decided the case. But the final issue for the planning board tonight essentially is, has it reviewed and accepted the recommendations of Stephen Keach, based on stipulations three and seven?
Okay, thank you. Going back to your original first point, I know the issue came up, and it's in the staff report as to who can speak at the meeting. It's probably a good thing for us to put that to rest, so we understand legally what, who can talk to this matter. There was a suggestion in the staff report that only those involved would be able to take part in this discussion. I already had a question on that myself. I do know that that was raised, I think you pointed out that was raised, by Mr. Hogan, who's the attorney for the Butters. I think it's important that we put that to rest. I think what we're talking about is just two people. Jeff, who's the alternate, Jeff Adams, was involved and did vote on the decision, and Karen Robinson, who was a new member, did not. So that's what we're talking about, who will be able to speak, Jeff or Karen, basically what it boils down to. So I'll ask you, Mr. Cleary, do you have an opinion on that, or does, you know, can you give us any guidance on that?
Sure. So it's not as much who can speak on the, but who is going to vote and render the decision. Certainly, it depends on how comfortable Karen is, on her familiarity with all of these proceeding courts and issues that went on for multiple planning board meetings. Her level of participation will depend on her comfort and involvement in everything that's happened. If Karen reviewed everything to date and feels confident, she could then she can let the chair know that. Otherwise, you would probably, since he's available, you would call the other voting member back, and Karen can participate to the extent she feels comfortable. Does that make sense?
Yeah, thank you.
I do have a hand from Attorney Hogan. I believe he would like to speak on this particular issue.
Who is that from?
Attorney Hogan.
The attorney for the plaintiff.
Okay. Attorney Hogan, go ahead.
Attorney Hogan, you are unmuted.
Thank you. Thank you. Good evening all. Can you hear me? Hi, thank you. Good evening. Thanks, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, you all. So I have been representing the Anthony's in this matter throughout the end of your review process and the court proceedings. And so, one thing, and I hope you all did see my letter that I sent to you today, and on this particular issue, as I said, planning boards, zoning boards, all the time have turnover, and if there are currently seated members of the board and/or alternate, and if they've reviewed and feel comfortable to render an opinion on this, then I think they are certainly authorized and seated as planning boards that the court asked the opinion of. So I just, I just wanted to repeat that right now, that I think it's an issue that needed to be resolved, you know, before we get into the other issues. So thanks, thank you for that opportunity.
Okay. So Attorney Cleary says it's voting, it's not participation. So that means Mrs. Robinson can participate, any member can participate. I think what you're talking about is that the ones who can vote are those that were there previously. In other words, Mr. Adams can vote, but Karen can't vote. My opinion on that, I don't really have any problem with that, because what we're trying to do is tell the court what we intended, basically, back then, at that time. That's what they're asking. What did we intend? And I don't think Mrs. Robinson knows what we intended. Jeff was there, he knows what he intended. So I would suggest that we all listen to, you know, comments from the board on the matter, once we talk to our engineer, I think that's next on the agenda, and then we put it to a vote at that point. And the vote should be the participants at that time. And the reason for that is that I don't believe, and I'll ask Mrs. Robinson for a comment, that she would know what our intention was. The judge is asking, what was our intention? That's kind of how I see it. I don't know if you have any comment on that, Attorney Cleary?
No, I agree with you 100%, Mr. Chairman. Unless Karen tells you that she has fully reviewed everything and would like to vote, then you would need to designate Jeff as the voting member on this case.
Let me ask Mrs. Robinson, do you have any objection to that? I'll pass this over to you.
You mean, me participating but not voting? Okay, well, I do feel comfortable participating because I have read thoroughly through all these reports, and I ran off every single one of them. I have been reading them right along, so I feel like I understand what, and it's all interpretation of what the judge is asking for, like you say. We don't know is it, which way is it going, you know, for you?
Right.
To vote. And I, you know, I don't know until I hear just what you're going to hear from the engineer, and then that, why I couldn't vote too. I mean, I don't know. I feel comfortable in reading everything that I did, which is the same that appeared for you guys when you had the meetings. I don't know. I just, I just would like to hear what else, you know, is coming on, obviously, and then I would feel comfortable to myself to vote. But I just didn't know what the legality was.
So it sounds like you're reserving judgment on voting, but participation, I guess that would say that we should probably move forward with the hearing more from the engineer, and when we cross the bridge of voting, we can make that decision. You can make your, you know, your desire known. Does anybody else have any other comments on that particular issue, as to who can participate, who can vote?
One more, one more point on that now. This is Attorney Cleary. I think because you're going to start receiving some evidence, you, I think, my understanding is you need to make the selection of the voting members at the beginning.
He's saying that you have to make the voting selection in the beginning.
Yeah, the beginning. Okay, Mr. Cashel?
I would just like to offer the comment that I recognize what Attorney Hogan wrote to the board. I did read the letter. It's a real stretch in anybody's reasonableness that you would introduce a new member, first time at a planning board meeting, to participate in voting and deliberating on a matter of which that person has not been a participant in this whole entire process, when the fact of the matter is, the full board that did vote on this matter and did attend every meeting on this matter is in attendance. So how would any logical person, whether it be a person on the bench, or an attorney, or a planning board member in attendance here at the Zoom meeting, or in person, okay, ever want to supplement the actual body of the planning board that's in attendance and ready to presume the issue at hand? So for someone to say they're comfortable in injecting themselves in the proceedings and voting on what took place for many months in front of this planning board, and that person being the first member, first meeting of the planning board, that's a stretch. And I really take exception to Attorney Hogan in his content of his letter that was delivered this afternoon, you know, not within the timeframe of any deadline for information having to do with this meeting tonight.
Okay. Well, I guess the best thing to do, in my opinion, is go with the recommendation of our attorney. So I'm asking you, Attorney Cleary, what do you recommend we do at this point?
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, there is a raised hand from Mr. Hogan.
Sure, go ahead, Mr. Hogan.
Hold on, I have to unmute him. You're unmuted, Mr. Hogan. Go ahead, Mr. Hogan.
Can you hear me? Thank you. The response I just wanted to make quickly to John's comment was, my letter saying it's a stretch to have a new member participate in something like this. So your attorney Cleary, just five minutes ago, said to you that in terms of who should be hearing this, it's either in terms of a change of membership. The general rule is to have the same members, or a members who have reviewed the matter and have become familiar with it. That's what Charlie just said about five minutes ago. And the question that I posed to the board in my letter, and yes, I'm sorry that I could only get it to you today, but this has been moving very quickly since we got the recent orders, and this is the way in which we could do it. So I got you that letter before the hearing today. But the point I raised in that letter was, as every planning and zoning board throughout the state, and I've been doing this for 25 years, all over New Hampshire, planning and zoning board memberships change all the time. They often change outside. They often change outside of the specific term of a specific member. So the board is, as it's constituted, at any given time. And there is some institutional memory from the board members who have still been there. There are new board members who come to their position. And if, as your attorney just said, they are familiar and they express their ability to vote, they can both participate and vote, and they should do that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Cleary, go ahead.
So I, I think perhaps the criteria that, that matters most in this particular instance is, as you pointed out, this remand is on the actual essence of the decision made by the board. So I agree that you would like to have the same members involved that actually made the decision. And secondly, you are in a position where you have all of those previously seated members available to you. So I, I think that probably sways the general rule a bit.
I hear what you're saying, and I know that's what the court is asking us. And it makes common sense to me that if they're asking what our intention was, only those that were there can speak to the intention. He's simply asking for clarification of a previous order. I think that makes sense. I, you know, that, that should go that way. But what's holding me up is the fact that I understand that this happens all the time, that boards do change. So I, I have some concern or uneasiness about not allowing Mrs. Robinson to vote. And, you know, that's why I'm looking for your advice. Because if she's not allowed to vote going forward, there may be a legal issue that arises from it. So I want to make sure, and I want to go with your advice, you're our attorney, that's correct. And so I guess turn it back to you.
Well, I would say that if Ms. Robinson could say between herself and Jeff, who voted on it, who would be the more person to make this decision on remands? That might answer the question. Other than that, it's, it's your decision, Mr. Chairman, taking all of these.
You know, I, I don't think that, if we're talking about voting, the voting will be on how we respond to the court. That's the matter that we have a public hearing on. It's not whether we approve or disapprove or open up the whole, the whole case again. It's simply a response to the court. So that's what we need to focus on. How will we respond? What was our intention? Like, you know, Mr. Keach said there's box A or box B. Did we, did we intend for him to come back to us? Or did we intend for it to be a ministerial? So from that standpoint, I mean, I, I'm looking for a response from you, Mrs. Robinson. I don't think that, you know, even if you did vote, it's not on the whole case. It's only on that clarification, if you will.
Mr. Chair, I have another raised hand.
Go ahead.
I have a raised hand from Sanaa Anthony. Are you ready for that question?
What would that, what would she, can I just?
May I unmute her, Mr. Chair?
Hold on a second, Dee.
Thank you.
The board is deliberating exclusively on the question at hand. And I don't believe there's an opportunity at this point in time for the general public to be asking questions on this matter.
See it. If the question has to do with what the deliberation, in other words, you know, what we're talking about right now, I don't want to open it up to comments about the previous decision or the such, you know, I'm not, we're not going down that path. We really need to hear from our engineer next. And so if I would ask whoever wants to ask that question, if they could hold that question, it's up to you. We could hold it until we hear from our engineer, because we do want to hear from our engineer. The bottom line here is, have we satisfied the 14 conditions that we set last year, two of which are in question by the judge? That's the bottom line. It's not the entire revote of the particular matter. So I just asked whoever's asking that question, if you want to hold your question. If you don't, let us know. Go ahead.
He says it, she, I do have a text message that says it's about the matter you're discussing.
She has a text message.
Okay, but I'm gonna, I don't want to open it up to, like, too, too long. So go ahead and make your comment, but try to keep it pertinent into what we're talking about, please.
Mrs. Anthony, you've been unmuted.
Thank you.
You have horrible feedback, ma'am.
You have a board member.
I, I'm sorry, I cannot hear you.
You had another old board member who did not come to the meeting the night you had the alternate.
I can't hear her.
She's saying, she's saying.
For the sanity of everybody on the call, if you could, I don't know what you do, but you try not to have the interference, whoever's around you, a dog or whatever it is.
Can a question be written?
The que, the issue is that her, she should be calling in on her telephone and turn her computer audio off, and she won't get that feedback.
She's typed the question, she's typed the question into the box. I can read it to you. One.
Do we have copies of those two stipulations?
What's typed in is one of the original board members who was present at all the meetings was not there to vote. The alternate stepped in on the very last day when the voting ta, was taken, voted in her place.
Did you understand what she said?
No, could you, I'm sorry, I didn't catch that. Hold on, Lori's gonna tell me what you said. Hold on.
Okay, Dee just read off that the reason that Jeff voted the night that we, we voted was because the member didn't show up and Jeff stepped in as the alternate. But before that, the current member at the time was at every meeting. But Jeff only stepped in because she wasn't there that night. And I just have, and, and I have something further to add. Jeff Adams has been an alternate for many years. Jeff has never stepped up to be a regular member. Karen Robinson just stepped up as a regular member, and I believe that she should be able to vote.
Any other comments on that issue?
Yeah, what does my stepping up as an alt, as not being a voting member?
Hold on, Jeff's gonna comment.
What does mine not being a voting member and staying as an alternate have to do with any of the subject? Period.
Was it the other one that was there at all the meetings? Okay.
Okay, so we have a little bit of an impasse here, disagreement on who can vote. We got guidance from the attorney, and the attorney, our attorney, who we pay, is saying that we should have Jeff speak. I think that's what you're saying, right, Attorney Cleary?
No, I don't think so.
All things being equal.
I'm sorry, not speak, vote. I meant vote.
Yeah, vote. Correct.
I just want to make sure that's your recommendation, because at the end of the day, you're the guy who advises us on legal matters. And for my, you know, two cents, I think we should listen to the attorney on a legal matter. He's our attorney. If anything goes forward, he's gonna be taking it forward. So that's my recommendation. Does anybody disagree with that?
I, I just wonder if you already had somebody.
Hold on, hold on, hold on.
If there was a member on the board that listened to all the meetings and was there, and then all of a sudden is not there, so there was actually someone voting as a substitute, really, to all the meetings? Was he there for all the meetings? Was he there to make comments? Was he there to do anything? Did he, did he say anything?
I've been here for eight years.
No, but I meant, did you go for every single meeting, as Lori did?
Yes. That's what I'm saying. I've been here for eight years.
I'm sorry, I can't hear.
Pass that back.
I'm just simply clarifying that I've been on this board for eight years as an alternate. And whether I was voting or not, I've been present at all meetings.
That's it, that's it.
Oh, I missed three.
Okay, so how about one more comment from Mr. Cashel, and then I got an idea.
But it was an alternate. It wasn't her. She didn't come to the meeting.
You know, I'd just like to maybe calm down from my previous statements on this. But for the life of me, I could not imagine that anybody would want to inject themselves into these proceedings. Again, their first meeting, unless there's a predisposition by that person to want to inject themselves into these proceedings, knowing in fact that the full board that actually voted on the matter that's before the planning board tonight, again, by remand, the full board is here. So there, to me, appears to be some predisposition on that person's part to inject them into a process of which they were not a participant previously.
Okay, we've heard from everybody except for Tim. Do you have any comments, Tim? Do you want to be chairman, Tim?
No comment. I was ready to make a motion. I make a motion that we I make a motion that we accept the voting members as myself, Jim Peck, Lori Millet, and Jeff Adams, and Francine. All who voted on the original case and all.
And that would follow what our attorney has recommended. Is that correct?
That is correct, yes.
Okay, so we have a motion, a second.
I will second it.
That was Francine?
Yes.
So we're putting it to a vote, and the vote would be, who would vote on this vote? It would be the voting members right now, including Mrs. Robinson. See how quickly I got that right? Okay, so let's do a roll call vote of the current voting members for this meeting, which would be Mrs. Robinson and not Jeff Adams.
Jim Peck?
I say yes.
Tim Moore?
With his motion.
Tim Moore? Lori Millet?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear.
I thought you said it was to make the present members voting.
I'm sorry, I can't.
The motion from Tim was to make Jeff a voting member. That was Tim's motion.
Oh, then it's no. Change mine to no.
I'm still a yes.
Mrs. Robinson?
No. You hear me? No?
I did, I heard you, but I didn't hear Francine. Did you do, call Francine?
I could not he, I could not hear Mrs. Robinson.
She said, she said, no. She said, no, I'm sorry.
Francine Hart?
Yes.
Your vote is 3-2-0.
3-2-0, so that means that Jeff would be the voting member. Should we vote on this particular matter in the public hearing? I mean, we have to make a decision. We can't be paralyzed here, so we have to move forward. We have to listen to our attorney, in my opinion. That's the only way we should go. So let's move forward. I know Mr. Keach is patiently waiting there. He's still there. He hasn't moved off. So go ahead, Steve.
Yes. Okay, I'm gonna give you some remarks, and they're gonna be limited to my opinion on resolution of stipulations three and seven that were appended to your June 19th, 2019 approval. But before I do, I think it's very important for the board, given the dialogue that just occurred about voting membership, to hear a concise statement from Mr. Cleary as to the mission of the board tonight, just to recap that. Charlie, if you don't mind.
Sure. So based on, can you hear me?
Yeah, go ahead.
Yes.
Based on the language of the court order, we are looking for the board to review conditions or stipulations three and seven and find whether, in the first instance, whether they consider them to be requiring additional board action. And then what, and then whether, since they're based on Steve Keach's recommendation, whether the board accepts Mr. Keach's recommendation.
Can we have one conversation, please? Mr. Cleary has the floor. Thank you. Go ahead, Charlie.
Okay, that completes my summary statement.
Okay, let's talk about.
Steve, if you're not, if you're still, I have a question from a board member before you get, get going, Mr. Keach.
All right.
Pass that over.
Okay, I, I guess I misunderstood now. I realize I am not allowed to vote, but participation, I should still be allowed to do so if I feel comfortable in doing so.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Do we have copies of stipulations three and seven?
So can I ask it, Mr. Cleary, a question?
Okay, Mr. Cashel has a question for you, Steve, before you get going.
So Attorney Cleary.
Okay.
So all board members that are participating tonight, all of them, even the non-voting ones, are able to deliberate on these proceedings?
Yes.
They're able to, they're able to discuss and add information that may be relevant.
But isn't this a, isn't this a deliberative proceeding?
Essentially, yes.
Okay, now, my next question is, wouldn't that necessitate only those members voting, participating in the deliberations?
No.
Why not?
Because it's a public hearing.
It's basically close to the other members, and it's close to anybody else adding any.
Not again, hear you.
Hold on now, hold on. Mr. Cashel, are you still speaking?
Yes, please.
Cleary already said I could.
Let him speak.
Attorney Cleary, in your legal opinion, in your judgment of what's going on, is not the board in a deliberative session right now relative to, it's been established, who is going to vote on the matter at hand? You following me?
Yeah. We have members, and they're the same members who voted a year ago on, on the decision. It would not seem that the new member would have much input, but it's up to the chairman to control statements and, and input.
Yeah, I, I just, I'm of the opinion, just my own opinion, with 33 plus years of experience in deliberative matters of a planning board in multiple communities, that unfortunately, under the circumstances, any discussion deliberation only includes those members that are in standing for voting on the matter. Unfortunately, the non-voting member in this particular case would be relegated to, to being an alternate and not involved. being an alternate and not involved with the proceedings of deliberation.
If I could just interject on that, all alternates always have the ability to be involved in deliberations. Since I've been here, Jeff has always asked questions. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna say that Mrs. Robinson does have the right to make comments, call it deliberation, whatever you want to call it, but I'm gonna, we're gonna listen to her as a new member, as far as I'm concerned, but when the vote, push comes to shove in the vote, we're gonna go with Attorney Cleary's recommendation, and Mr. Adams will be voting. Again, we're not voting on the entire project, we're voting on a response to a judge, did we pick box A or box B? So with that, I'll turn it back to Mr. Keach.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would assume in your packets for this evening, you have two memoranda that I prepared in recent days, one on June 11th, and a follow-up on June 15th, each of which speaks specifically to resolution of approval stipulations three and seven exclusively. As you, board members may recall, there was a lot of dialogue in the two meetings I attended near the end of last summer's proceedings, relative to opportunity for introduction of contaminants into groundwater resources in the vicinity of the project site through stormwater. We had a tremendous amount of discussion about that. I contributed to some resolution on that in directing the design engineer to make a series of changes to the stormwater design review, and still, at the end of the day, there was desire on the part of board members to have a safety check. If we Mr. Cashel and I spoke, and we identified the authority that your board possesses under subsection 230 hyphen 8 of the Town of Plastow Site Plan Review Regulations to require monitoring in certain instances. That culminated in a recommendation that I gave in a letter that was written days before the meeting at which you voted to that ultimately ended up with language that became stipulation three, that in essence directed the applicant and myself to identify a protocol and plan for that testing to occur. That has occurred, and I speak to it at length in my memo of June 11th. The applicant engaged a highly qualified firm, high-end bond, to prepare that aspect of, addressed that aspect of the stipulation, and that led to preparation of a document entitled Environmental Monitoring Plan: Stormwater and Groundwater Sampling for the ProQuick Equipment Site and Sales, that was issued most recently on June 4th of this year. That plan effectively bubbles down on the testing that was directly contemplated by my 2019 recommendation, in that the sampling goes beyond simply sampling periodically water extracted from monitoring wells, but it also includes direct sampling of discharge from the stormwater management system at four different points, the only four portion on the site of site-generated runoff. In addition, immediately adjacent to those sampling points, or in the general vicinity, depending upon circumstance, there is the periodically, in accordance with a sampling schedule that is in fact a part of the plan. Moreover, the plan contemplates certain parameters that will be sampled analytically, the samples will be tested for. The parameters that will be tested against are indicators of, if one of them were to appear to see petroleum, volatile organic compounds, and so forth, that would be most frequently indicative of stormwater runoff that was, or contamination carried by stormwater runoff from a site of the variety at hand here. Those same parameters will also be used to sample the actual discharge from the stormwater system prior to reaching the environment. So with that explanation, I think that the intent, or my intent, was clear, and that is, with the stormwater sampling, we are getting essentially raw runoff. If it doesn't show up, or if any contamination doesn't show up in the source, it's probably not going to show up in the sink on the far end of it. Likewise, if it shows up in the sink, we know that we have a problem. So, the, I think we've developed a very good plan, I think a very good plan has been developed. It's a plan that operates in perpetuity unless released by the Plastow Planning Board. In other words, it cannot be suspended. Recommendation that I offered, that has been implemented by the applicant's consultants, is the inclusion of a notation on the plan that indicates, should the applicant, his heir, successor sign fail to do the appropriate testing that the plan contemplates, and report the results in timely manner to the Town of Plastow Planning Department or Planning Board, that that represents a site plan violation, that can be remedied under existing New Hampshire law. You know, so I think we have a very solid plan, and I think it is a plan that was maybe not in June 19th, 2019. I don't think the details of the plan were established as firmly as they are this year, or right now, but I think the directive that you gave under condition three, and your expectations at the time, that the applicant's consultant and myself go away and bring you back a plan that we endorse, would essentially equal your endorsement. So I believe, and getting back to the spirit of the instruction from the court, Attorney Cleary will talk probably more about that, but I think what has occurred over the last year is precisely what you contemplated, and I think ultimately that I was not under the impression a year ago, Friday night, this coming Friday night, that I would be speaking to you about this year in the future. That was not my expectation, I was at those meetings as well. So condition three is
Can we, can we, can we just stop there with stipulation seven, if you're done with seven? I'd like to have some comments on stipulation seven. If you have more, go ahead on stipulation. I'm sorry, stipulation three. Are you all set on number three?
I am.
Okay, and you did recommend at the end of that, that they add a final version to the drawing. I don't know if you mentioned that in what you just said, but
I did.
Yeah, okay.
I did. And that note that I recommended at the conclusion of my discussion, relative to stipulation three in my memorandum to your board dated June 11th, has in fact been added to the plan verbatim, as I recommended.
Okay, so regardless of how we respond to the court as to whether stipulation three was ministerial, or whether we had to come back, at this point in time, it's, you're satisfied as our engineer that they've met that condition?
I think we, what we ended up with actually goes beyond in a bit.
Okay, so you're saying, yes, we've met that condition, so
Absolutely.
I mean, that doesn't address what we meant, but that's the bottom line, in my opinion. Have that, has that condition been met, regardless of whether it was ministerial or not? If it was ministerial, it would have been met, and then it would have been signed off by the chair once it was met.
That was my understanding as your consultant of the exact order of operations here.
Okay.
I was at that meeting the night you approved it.
Why don't we move on to any questions on stipulation three from the board? Anybody have any questions on stipulation three? For the engineer?
I don't have, I don't have a question. I don't have a question, I just have a comment that I'd like added to the record. The board never, even though I know what you're talking about, stipulation three, the board never formally got any type of an email, or any type of paperwork on the notice, I believe it's called notice of approval. The board never saw that. So I would just like that put in the record.
Any other comments on stipulation three?
Yeah, yes, Mr. Chairman, may I speak?
Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. I want to comment under Hogan, or Attorney Hogan's, letter that was sent to us late this afternoon, on page four, the last paragraph that he writes, he says, "The board's decision failed to and failed to provide enforceable sureties about water quality." I just heard Mr. Keach eloquently opine on those sureties, and as far as I'm concerned, the only things we have in life is taxes, and I think it's incredibly unfair for that statement to be made, given all of the extra steps that this board took to ensure water quality. It is my understanding that whatever the wells are, as far as water quality is right now, that we are ensuring that Milton Cat is not going to deteriorate the quality of that water further. That was my understanding of it, and I really think it's pretty clear.
That was the directive I took from your board a year ago. Exactly what you just said was precisely my attitude as I worked with their consultant on the outcome that is now before you.
Any other questions from the board? Are you all set, Francine?
Yes, I am, thank you.
I have a question. There will be eight wells in total, is that correct, Mr. Keach?
Four wells, four sampling points, total eight samples collected.
Right, and they will, at various intervals, I think the first monitoring wells are quarterly, and then they go to annually, and that's in perpetuity.
Semi-annually, then annually. For the wells, the groundwater monitoring begins on a sampling schedule that is semi-annual, and then after two years shifts to annual, but the stormwater sampling, the discharge from the stormwater treatment system, the actual system, commences quarterly, and then becomes semi-annual after two years.
In perpetuity.
We're sampling the actual discharge more frequently because we're trying to establish a baseline.
But the sampling is in perpetuity, that's the note that you put in?
Absolutely, and a detailed report, including the analysis from a certified laboratory, has to be delivered to your office annually.
I don't want to go into minutia here, but they're measuring certain things, and I'm not that clear on what they're measuring. I assume it's bad stuff, whatever it is, so could you make some comments on what they're measuring? And my second question is, once we receive the report, and it's above a certain level, do we have a remedy or an enforcement action that we can take at that point?
Of course. I mean, what we're doing here is monitoring for something, and the remedy is a site plan violation. Representations were made throughout the entire process that there would not be any diminution if we start to, that's part of the record, and if we start to realize it as a result of build-out, construction, and operation of this site, you enjoy great remedy that Attorney Cleary could speak far more completely on than I can. Getting back to your first question, relative to the actual parameters, I'm just gonna grab a copy of the document here. I've got quite a stack of paper I've accumulated, so bear with me a moment. With regarding the stormwater monitoring, this is the direct discharge from the site, not the groundwater, but the stormwater. Quarterly samples for the initial two years will analyze in the field, field parameters, pH, dissolved oxygen, temperature, specific conductance, turbidity. Those are all parameters in and themselves indicative of water quality, but over the duration of time, changes in those parameters can be indicative of the introduction or presence of contaminants. So while you may see a single sample sitting by itself, you know, sample number 37, you know, you might not be excited about it. It may not show up that there's any concentration of anything that's in that sample that is alarming. But if you compare it to sample 11, 26 samples before, and you notice modifications in pH, dissolved oxygen, conductance in particular, you will come to understand that there's a dynamic happening in that water, that what is causing that, and you look for trends. That's why we're doing that aspect of from, in the laboratory, again, speaking exclusively at the moment to the groundwater samples that are, excuse me, stormwater samples that are taken from the system prior to discharge in the environment, laboratory analysis of the collected sample that happened subsequent to analysis of field parameters will include analysis for total petroleum hydrocarbons, commonly referred to as TPH, total suspended solids, or TSS, ethylene glycol, which is a component of antifreeze. That was included because some of the equipment that would be stored there for length of time has radiators, and, you know, we included that parameter. We're really looking to, for volatile organic compounds and hydrocarbons that would be more indicative of fuel. We put the glycol parameter in there so that we could monitor that as well. Now, moving to the actual groundwater monitoring, four groundwater monitoring wells that will be installed at strategic locations on the site. The field parameters will be the same as for the grab samples of stormwater taken from the systems itself, direct discharge I just spoke of, that namely pH, dissolved oxygen, temperature, specific conductance and turbidity. The laboratory analyses will be The laboratory analyses will be total petroleum hydrocarbons, what we were really looking for all along. Again, those field parameters, we look for trends and the laboratory analysis, we look for evidence. One of the dynamics that I insisted on as Kai and Bond developed this program and, you know, frankly, you folks gave me a year to think about it, right? Was the grab samples that we're doing of the direct stormwater, if we start to see trending in that and trending in the groundwater samples 15 years from now, we also want to know where the source of that problem was. Sampling groundwater alone, on the site, but it's going to tell us very little necessarily about the source of the contaminants that may appear in groundwater. For all we know, there could be historical contaminants in the groundwater there today. That area around the vicinity of this site is urbanized and has been for a long time. So by establishing a baseline and doing these comparative things, we'll be able to look for trends over time. People will be able to understand water quality in general, both at the surface level and at the groundwater level on each discrete sample, but also be able to look for trends that may occur over time. And the other aspect that's really silent in the report, but it's completely implicit in the thought process, is if you look at a copy of the site plan and you notice where these wells, groundwater wells are, they kind of take the form of almost a quadrant around the site or at least a triangle around the site. Groundwater moves via hydraulic gradient. By having these monitoring wells and knowing what the, we'll be able to, we've got a feel, I have a feel anyways, for what direction groundwater travels there and I think anybody who looks at a groundwater map would reach the same conclusion. But the trend part of it over time, if you start to see or A1C concentrations, how do those concentrations of contaminant change over time and is indicative of travel and transport? So if there ever had to be remediation, that data becomes incredibly important. It's completely irrelevant right now, but would become very important if one attempted to perform mitigation. I think what's occurred here is Kai and Bond has given you a very good plan.
Okay, thank you very much for that explanation. That answers my question. Is there any other questions from the board on stipulation three? John?
Excuse me. I just had a question on when you do find something, if you did ever, what is the plan that you have also with this plan to back it up and being able to correct it, let's put it that way?
Is provide the data.
This could work fine, but if it doesn't and somewhere along the way.
I understand, I understand the essence of your question completely. What plan that is the groundwater and frankly, surface water monitoring plan that is before you does is provide data to determine whether there's a problem or not. If a problem is detected, it becomes an enforcement issue and again, there's remedies through New Hampshire law that describe that remedy and those remedies may vary with time. And again, Attorney Cleary is probably far more qualified to speak to that than I am. What we're giving you is yeses and nos, is there a problem or is there not a problem? And the answer is ever yes, given the representations made by the applicant at the time of site plan approval that are part of the record, then they own it and you may need to enforce it. But to try to do that, speculate in advance what the problem is and how it came to be there, that's really impossible.
Any other questions from the board on stipulation three? Okay, let's move on to stipulation seven, Mr. Keach.
Thank you, Mr. Peck. Stipulation seven was something that in the circle that Mr. Cashel and I have each traveled in over the last 30 something years is what I often refer to as the catch-all condition. You've got a large set of documents during the approval process, wherever change, because of input from your board. Once we reach a point at the outcome or nearing the outcome of an approval process and fulfillment of conditions, it's not beyond the realm of possibility that revisions or amendments are made to a site plan in order to satisfy a state agency, the New Hampshire DOT, the NHD, one of the NHDs or something, as well as, you know, there was still a letter that I had written back over a year ago that still had some, you know, minor I's to dot and T's to cross. I believe the intent, in fact, I know the intent of condition seven, which reads, "Prior to planning the board endorsement of the plan, it shall be subject to final review and written recommendation by the town's consultant engineer," me. I treated that as check of the plan to make certain that for you on June 19th, a year ago, revisions that were made to them were not contrary to any requirement of the municipality that they were done either as dotting I's, crossing T's or direct response to permits, a series of state agency permits that had been issued in the last year. I went through that and in my memorandum to your board dated June 11th, I had a modest list of comments, most of which frankly, were of a non-technical nature. They were largely Scrivener's errors and affixing stamps to drawings and things that I know I could be a pain in the butt when I'm reviewing another engineer's plans, but that's what you pay me for and, you know, a couple spelling errors, so on and stuff like that. This is a final plan. It's the output of not only this consultant who prepared the plan, but of your board who approved it, I want it to be correct. So Mrs. Voss's assistance, that memorandum found its way to the applicant's consultant, civil site design consultant, and those corrections were made. That is essentially what prompted me last Friday on the 15th to issue a subsequent memo that served frankly, as an update to my memo of the 11th, acknowledging that all of the, I'll call them stipulation seven remarks that I had given on the 11th have been satisfied with the exception of a very minor sheet labeling problem on sheets 32 and 33. A sheet got added to the set because they added additional details that were requested in fulfillment of conditions and they never renumbered the sheets after it. So that remains to be done, but I don't consider that substantial. I think the threshold that your board contemplated when you imposed stipulation seven has been substantially satisfied and I believe that the way that that process went was precisely what was contemplated by your board June 19th, one year ago. Any questions, Mr. Chairman?
Okay, any questions on stipulation seven from the board? I think that that stipulation is very, very clear and that's a typical stipulation anyway, that you, you know, have a final go at the plan, that's not unusual. I would suggest that that one, in my mind anyway, is ministerial. That's my opinion on the board. We didn't talk to the issue on stipulation three as to whether it's ministerial or not ministerial, but I'd like, since the board is asking that question and that's the purpose of this meeting, I would like to go there in a minute, but I would like to give, actually, I'd like to give the public a chance to ask the engineer any questions at this point in time, if anybody from the public has any questions. On stipulations three and seven, if they have any questions or comments.
I have a raised hand from Mr. Hogan.
Okay.
You're unmuted now, Mr. Hogan, you may go ahead.
Thank you, Board. My comment, so I've listened specifically to all of the comments on conditions three and seven, but I just wanted to make this comment right now, just in terms of the context for wherever the board goes with this right now. So if tonight the board determines that those conditions are either ministerial or that they are now met, what the court said was the board hasn't rendered a final decision yet and once it decides on these two issues, then as if for the very first time, it will render a final decision. And the court specifically said, so if that's the outcome of the hearing tonight, if the board tonight goes on to determine that conditions three and seven are either ministerial or that they are now finally met, then the only thing that means is that you've now rendered a final decision and the court just told us in its orders that the Anthony's and all of the other residential abutters, for the first time, are then required to take their appeal back to the court and the court specifically said they could go to the zoning board on the issue regarding the contractor yard not being permitted by your zoning ordinance. So I just want to make sure that everybody understands the implications of the court's order and the scope of the remand hearing tonight because I understand the board is only saying, "We have a view conditions" and yep, we thought they were checkbox conditions and we thought they were ministerial and now we think they're met. But the point of that is all of my clients and the neighbors participated throughout the planning board's entire review process. All their technical and complicated engineering issues are of paramount concern to them. And so when it got to this point in the process, we agreed about a condition that just whatever remaining engineering issues there are, just go figure them out with the engineer, is because it takes it out of the planning board's public hearing process. All of the people that showed up all of the time to give their testimony and evidence on this, they got cut out at the point where it was a condition of approval and it is of paramount consideration to them. And I have to, while I have the floor right now and I'm not taking everyone's time lightly right now, I sat and listened to the board's discussion on the first agenda item tonight and you spent a lot of time talking about a medical facility that might be an urgent care facility and hours from eight till eight. One of the issues that my clients and everybody in the neighborhood brought up in this case is that the Plastow Planning Board approved this commercial industrial heavy equipment facility and the hours of operation were from 6:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., Monday through Saturday. The construction hours for this, which is nine acres of clear cutting, et cetera, were from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., Monday through Saturday. There's no way to reconcile the discussion the board had with the first applicant tonight and that discussion included board members specifically saying, "We want to hear from the abutters about hours of operation." This is in the urgent care facility discussion. Noise factor would come into play for abutters. There's no way to reconcile those issues. So the point I'm making, all of the issues, so if the board tonight decides that those three and seven are ministerial or final, that puts all of my clients and all of the neighbors back into the position, just as the court said, as I quoted to you in my letter today, that it's as if the planning board, the remand simply allows the planning board to pick up where it left off and the petitioners can then go refile their appeal to the court and they can file an appeal with the zoning board to say that the contractor yard isn't permitted at all, et cetera, and we don't want to do that. We hope that tonight would be an actual opportunity for the board to revisit these things. And in the context of the discussion you had with the first applicant tonight, there's no way to reconcile these two decisions right now. And so if the board goes on tonight to decide that, yep, we're going to check those two boxes and that's all we're doing tonight, then I guess that's your decision, excluding one of your own members in a way that I've never seen a board try to exclude one of their own members in terms of their own participation. So if it does, it puts us all back in that position.
Okay, you broke up it there.
Can I speak?
Sorry?
I'm sorry, I, no, I'm done, I thank you for your time.
Mr. Chair, may I speak, please?
Go ahead, Francine.
I really think Mr. Hogan has mixed quite a bit of metaphors in his speech. I'm going to refer you to RSA statute 677:151A and it says, "If an agreed party desires to appeal a decision of the planning board and if any of the matters to be appealed are appealable to the Board of Adjustment under RSA 676:53, such matters shall, and shall is underlined, be appealed to the Board of Adjustment before any appeal is taken to Superior Court under this section." So it appears that the plaintiffs have put the cart before the horse and they're introducing a whole bunch of other little caveats to what we're trying to just get through tonight. I'm also going to refer you to Mr. Hogan's page four, "The board feel to provide any meaning buffering of the proposed commercial industrial equipment facility." Those are incredibly subjective words, so I'm going to give you a little bit of fact on this. Okay, what we determined this board did was they made a 50-foot no-cut zone of 20 to 40-foot trees. We also made them install a six-foot fence and we also have 200 feet of woods between the backyards and Route 125. the backyards and Route 125. I don't know how much more meaningful that can be. We also, and, and to, to the response of the time, and, you know, with loud noises and headlights, et cetera, et cetera, versus perhaps equipment, which I don't know how noisy it is, but it, it may not be as noisy as, as an ambulance, but I really think all of this stuff is getting mixed up and muddled, and I, I think it's highly, highly inappropriate to do that.
Mr. Cashel?
Mr. Hogan, Mr. Hogan has his hand raised again, just so you know.
I'm going to recognize Mr. Cashel.
One, one thing that has to be made clear, and long before Attorney Hogan represented his clients, the board offered, in the last public hearing, the opportunity, and it emphasized several times, the opportunity for anyone in the audience who wished to say anything further, to please do so before the public hearing was closed. No one raised their hand, no one expressed any interest in adding anything further as far as new information on the plan, or had any questions, or wanted to make any statements whatsoever. At that point in time, when it was made clear that the board was moving to close the hearing and go into deliberative session, that's when the public hearing was closed, when it was absolutely clear that nobody in the audience wished to speak further. The board legally closed the public hearing, began deliberations, made their final action and decision on this matter, and it was conditional on the issue of the wells and further final input rendered by the engineer. And that's relative to the site plans correctly corresponding with the action of the planning board that night. And that now has been achieved. And to reopen this public hearing, when it was officially and legally closed, all the Ts dotted, all the I, I should say, the Ts crossed, Is dotted, things were finalized relative to the public hearing and public input. So we're here tonight trying to determine what the judge would like this board to do, and that is to take up these two conditions, and whether final action of the board is constituted by ministerial action and acknowledging that tonight, or if the board so chooses to finalize the decision. You know, it's inconsequential, in a way, when you think about it, whatever way the board goes.
Right. Yeah, I think Mr. Cashel has a point. I mean, the, the public hearing, as announced, as we read at the beginning, is not to talk about reopening the plan. It's not an amended site plan. It's a, it's a consideration of a, a Superior Court order in response to that court order. But I would like to, to hear from Attorney Cleary in response to Attorney Hogan, not to get into some courtroom back and forth, but if you could just give a brief answer to what he commented on.
Sure, I'll, I'll stick to two points. Attorney Hogan and his clients can't appeal any decision of this board. The judge is pointing out that that's a right of an appellant. There's no indication from the judge as to whether they'll be successful or not. I tend, I tend to think they will not be, but they have their right to appeal, and there's nothing we can do about it. That, that's fine. You don't have to look any further than the court order to find out that the judge found this board did a proper job in its homework and due diligence on the water issue, water quality issue, and the buffer issue. The judge says right in its order. So those issues, in my mind, aren't really before this, this board tonight. I think you're dealing with it properly and focusing on what's left to do, which is just the conditions three and seven.
I want to focus on the response to the, to the judge, because that's what we're here for, to determine what our intention was, to clarify for the judge. So let's talk about the two possibilities. The first possibility is both the engineer and our lawyer laid out, is that we intended that stipulation three and seven, they would come back, the engineer would come to us, and we would revote, or we would vote on whether those conditions were met. That's door A, that's possibility A. And the second intention was, did we intend for both three and seven to be ministerial? And that's the term that we're using, to say, basically, it's a condition like any of the other 14, 12 conditions, there's 14 in total, and typically what happens, correct me if I'm wrong, Dee or Tim or John Cashel, but what typically happens is, once the conditions are put in, the chairman is responsible to review those conditions before he signs the final order. It doesn't come back to the board typically. Now, Tim, correct me if I'm wrong, isn't that the usual procedure?
It is, yes.
Thank you. So I think I'd, what I'd like to do, I mean, the board has their opinion on this, but I would like to do is talk about stipulation three and then stipulation seven. Let's, let's start with stipulation seven, because I think that's, that's easier. When you look at stipulation seven, I guess it wouldn't hurt to read it. You have it there? Let me have it. Okay, stipulation seven is, is a very simple one. Prior to planning board endorsement of the plan, it shall be subject to final review and written recommendation by the town's consultant engineer, Keith Nordstrom Associates. So we're not talking about whether he's done that, we're talking about, was our intention that it was ministerial or not ministerial? Comments from the board? What do you think? Any opinion?
I can jump in personally. If I can speak. I think it's been a precedent of our board to follow exactly that process, ministerial, it's on approval of our consultant engineers, and we trust in his expertise and his obviously detailed analysis of all of these plans, and I think it's a precedent that we have established, you know, at least over the couple of years that I've been on that board. So that's the way, I guess, I'm looking at it.
Okay, so you're of the opinion that it was ministerial?
Yes, because that's the way we have normally conducted other site plans, is yep, let Mr. Keach just take care of all the stuff that he needs to take care of, and we're good to go. And I think we voted many times exactly that way. So that was the intent that I was voting on it last year, with the same intent.
Okay, other opinions on the board? Anyone? No strong feelings?
I agree. This is Tim.
Thank you, Tim. Did you want to make a comment? We're talking about stipulation seven as to whether it's ministerial, was ministerial, our intention was ministerial, or whether we needed to come back to the board.
You know, in, in the many years that I've written decisions on planning board actions, never have I ever come across an issue like this. For final engineering review, it, it's, it's a basic stipulation, so that when the plans come back for endorsement of the planning board, they, it's up to staff to make sure that the, the planning board knows that those plans comply with the approval, and to have in hand the engineer's final recommendation. There's no further deliberation, there's no opening up of the public hearing. I, this is, you know, this is almost unimaginable, that it has come to this, but, you know, that's litigation, and anything can happen in litigation. But I would like to say to Attorney Scott Hogan, that if the shoe was on the other foot, and you were representing the community, you, you, in all honesty, would never raise these type of concerns or put your client, the community, in this position. You wouldn't. I, I, I sincerely believe you would honestly not do that if the shoe was on the other foot, and that's what we're dealing with tonight. This is clearly a ministerial decision of the board that has to be made, period.
Okay.
Mr. Hogan does still have his hand raised?
Okay, go ahead.
You're unmuted, Mr. Hogan. Please go ahead.
Thank you. I, yes. I, and I, I really do appreciate the time, and I, I wasn't going to raise my hand, but I think Mr. Cashel knows, or should know me better than the way that he just had to go by, okay? I've been doing this for 25 years, all over the state of New Hampshire. Every single case I have, I represent my clients zealously and honestly, and yes, none of us agree about these legal issues, but I just, I can't let those comments go. It's not unimaginable. I mean, all of this, the, the board's practices on conditional approvals, I have four different Superior Court appeals right now, where different boards all around New Hampshire have different procedures on how they render conditional approvals. I have different opinions from different judges on how they view those. I just had a judge that said, no jurisdiction. They re-inbanded back to figure if they do have jurisdiction. So I represent my client, and I, I follow what the court did, and in this case, it seems this discussion tonight has been without a real understanding of the most recent three orders that the Superior Court rendered, and they told me and my clients that the planning board in Plastow has not issued a final decision yet, and they have to go back and do that. And once they do, my clients have rights to go appeal again if we need to, and that's all I'm here advocating for. It's not unimaginable, it's not just because of litigation, it's the way that land use practice works. And I just needed to say that, and I really do appreciate the time.
Thank you. I don't, I don't want to get into that.
I just really appreciate his opinion.
Okay. It's, it's okay to disagree.
That's right.
What's not okay is not to listen to the other person. Anybody else have a comment from the board on stipulation seven? Okay, I just wanted to get a consent, before we have a motion, I guess we have a consensus, just go around the room.
Excuse me, excuse me, Mr. Chairman, I do have some questions on, on the, on the message board here, if you'd like to hear them, or if you'd like to wait for them. I just want to make you aware that they're there.
Okay. Can they wait, or do you think we should ask them now?
A, a couple are about the opportunity to let Attorney Hogan respond, and I think that that's been done. The other one is that Ms. Anthony feels that a number of things were said incorrectly about the RSA. I'm assuming that is with Ms., what Ms. Hart said, when she quoted the RSA, but I don't want to speak for Ms. Anthony either. She could, Ms. Anthony, if you could confirm that that's correct?
Attorney Cleary, this question is for you. I know this is a public hearing. The board is in the middle of a deliberation. Is it appropriate or correct for the public to actually have an opportunity at this point to ask questions?
Well, we scheduled it as a, as a public hearing, Mr. Cashel. I don't think they should be asking questions that are not relevant to what the board is deliberating. The whole issue about the ZBA, that is not before the board right now. That, that issue is, is a side issue. So I think we're down to, the chairman was going to decide, or talk to the board about whether condition three was ministerial, and then I have a recommendation after that.
I wanted to, before we got to condition three, I wanted to make sure we have a consensus of the board on seven before we have any motion. I just want to go around the room and, and ask Francine, are you okay? I think you already said it. Never mind, you already said it.
Yep.
Lori, are you, what do you think? Ministerial or not? What's your opinion?
I don't think it's ministerial.
Can you? I need to see the...
I don't think it's ministerial.
I'm sorry.
She just got it. She's all right.
It's Lori Mallett. Can you, can you hear me, Dee?
Yes, I can, thank you.
Okay. I don't think it's ministerial, and I know myself, I have been very unhappy with some of the past practices that have been done in this board, so I don't find it ministerial. I'm only one vote, that's my opinion.
I think, are you on a comment, Jeff? Are you finding ministerial or not? Jeff, I just want to know what the consensus is.
I have nothing to say about it.
Nothing?
I'm just going to leave it at that.
Okay.
All right. Remember, you're a voting member.
I understand.
Karen, do you want to make a comment or not? You don't have a feeling one way or the other?
I am not saying anything, because I'm not even included, so that's that. That's the way I feel, and that's the way it's been treated, so.
Here, take that and say that again for the record. Go ahead, I, they didn't hear you, so go say it again. Sorry.
I am not included, and therefore I am not making any statements, because that is the way it was decided.
I was, I was just looking for your opinion on it. Sorry.
Not getting any.
Okay, I think, and I already heard from Tim, so let's move to stipulation three. It's a little bit more complicated. This is, you know, monitoring wells, and again, you know, was this, what was our intention at the time? Now, we've already heard from our engineer, and he's saying that he's satisfied that it's been met. So it's kind of a moot point, but I think the judge is still asking us, what was the original intent? That's the question before us. Now, you know, I feel satisfied that from hearing from our engineer, my opinion is that it was ministerial, but that's just one person's opinion. Let's go to Tim. Tim, what do you think?
Well, I, I think it's ministerial. Our, I mean, the decision that we made in the conditional approval was that there needed to be monitoring wells, and there needed to be some, some type of maintenance plan to accompany those, both of which have been provided. I'm certainly no expert in where the monitoring wells should be located, or the number of monitoring wells, so I didn't see the need to come back and, and review that. I did reread Steve Keach's report, and I, I thought it was, was, was well-written, and I, I concur with it. So I think that the monitoring, the applicant has agreed to what our review engineer has proposed, and so I, I think there, it's ministerial, and is, all that work has been completed.
Okay. Can we talk to everybody?
On number three, I would agree with what Tim just quoted about the monitoring wells, that...
Ministerial?
Yes.
Okay. Jeff?
I'm in agreement.
Okay. So Lori said ministerial, and Jeff was in agreement, and at the risk of asking you, Karen, do you have an opinion? And I do want to hear from you.
I'm out.
Okay. Thank you. So it sounds like the board is...
You didn't, you didn't ask Francine.
I don't think you asked Ms. Hart.
Yeah, sorry. Go ahead.
That's all right. I, I agree with you, Jim, that it probably is a moot point at this issue, because, you know, I personally left that meeting last year, not ever expecting to have to go back to address any of these issues, and the fact that, whether it's ministerial or not, is it is a moot point, because it's actually already been accomplished and been done, so clearly that flows within the context of being ministerial, so I'm in agreement with the rest of the board.
Okay. Yeah, I agree. I mean, what we... I mean, what we really want at the end of the day is that we have these conditions in place. We had 14 conditions, and we want them to be upheld, you know, upheld. So that's where the rubber hits the road, as far as I'm concerned. I voted against this project. I was one of the votes against it. However, we did put conditions on it, and the question before us is not the project itself. The question before us is these two conditions. And I was an advocate of putting conditions on. And I want to make sure these conditions are upheld. I am a little bit uneasy with the, I guess, what is our remedy when the conditions are not met? But I think I can defer to the engineer on that. So with that, we could move, I'm suggesting possibly, to this draft motion that we have in the staff report to respond.
Point of order, Mr. Chair?
I'm sorry? Who was that?
Mr. Chair had a final comment. I leave Attorney Clary, he had a final comment to make to the board after all comments are made.
Mr. Clary has a...
That's true, Mr. Chairman, if you want.
Okay, Mr. Clary, go ahead.
So one of the reasons it's important for you to discuss this ministerial versus substantial nature to these conditions is that going forward, as you render more conditional approvals, you'll either need to have a subsequent hearing if they're not ministerial, or continue your present practice of trusting in your engineer and allowing the chairman to endorse the plans. In this case, even the judge, for a long time, thought these were ministerial conditions until he thought about it over and over again, and he came out on the side that reading the two conditions together, they became conditions precedent to your decision. So while the staff, the motion, the draft motion is fine, I would, for the judge's sake, a phrase at the end indicating that the board does accept Keach-Nordstrom's recommendation. Just to close the decisions and the judge's conclusion.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments?
I didn't hear everything he said.
Ms. Mallett didn't hear everything you said. What did you hear?
It was broken up, so...
Could you just repeat that? I'm sorry, we're having technical problems.
Sure, sorry. She didn't hear any of it?
Peter, please.
But why don't you, I'm sorry for everybody's purpose who heard it, if you could just repeat it, I'm sorry.
Right, so I was... You know, there's been the decision, two ministerial conditions, or actually conditions precedent, that the planning board should take further action on. The judge had the same dilemma. He wasn't sure early on whether they were ministerial or not. He came to the conclusion that reading the two conditions together got him to a point where they were conditions precedent, requiring, in his opinion, the board take further action. So while it's fine that you render a decision that you intended them to be ministerial to close out the loop with the judge, I would add a phrase at the end, saying that you do, however, adopt Mr. Keach's recommendation, and that will close the matter.
You all set with that now?
I don't know if I really understand it.
She said she doesn't know whether she understood it.
Define ministerial.
I'm trying to... I'm trying to make sure. We don't want the judge to think that you ignored him. He found there were conditions precedent.
Right.
If you simply vote that they're not, he might send it back to you again out of some displeasure.
Attorney Clary, not to cut you off, but with this clarification you're providing, my question is, yes, the board has deliberated on three and seven ministerially, but should not the board this evening, in addition to possibly taking the action of the written draft motion, also take a vote that the decision tonight is the final approval? So there's no question about it. This is the final approval for this project with this vote tonight. So that would be an additional motion for the board to consider, so that when it does go back before the judge, if that's where it ends up, that there will be no question about the board taking final action on this project. You know, the one big lesson we've learned, I think of all of this, is that when we take final action, we have to declare that as final action, so that if any decision of the planning board is appealed, that this declaration has been made, and it doesn't become a question of whether or not the board took final action, conditional approval or whatever. You know, this board, from now on, when they make a final decision, it will be the final decision. Now, that may slow up the decision-making process, and that's unfortunate, but in reality, if there are any loose ends left in the board's decisions, such as three and seven have become, we as a board will have to wait to have all of those answers provided for before this board takes that final vote to approve a plan. And that would involve the plan being before us the night of the vote, and for that decision to be final in all its language.
Mr. Cashel, I think that's a very good idea. I think the other thing you could do to prevent against this happening in the future is have two categories in your written decision, conditions precedent, conditions subsequent. The latter being the ministerial not, you know, they don't affect final approval and delay it.
So taken.
Okay.
But that's... Yeah.
Sorry. Any other questions from the board, or any other comments?
I'm sorry that I'm so confused. So if I understand it correctly, Attorney Clary, you're recommending that we make it precedent? Is that correct? Is that your recommendation?
No. All I'm saying is that you're here on remand from a judge of the Superior Court. And while it's fine for you to reach a decision that you've meant both conditions to be conditions subsequent, and disagree with the judge, to accommodate the judge, I would just conclude, as Mr. Cashel said, what the judge is looking for you to do is actually accept Mr. Keach's recommendation, that the plan is final. So you could either say that in a sentence, or you could say, "This constitutes our final decision," something that closes the process completely.
Okay, thank you.
Now, one other issue here is there are 12 other conditions, and those have to be met. I guess I would ask Attorney, I'm sorry, Mr. Keach, what is the status of those 12? You know, it's a lot of conditions there. Some of them are just simple ones, you know, merging the two lots. Maybe you could just run through those other conditions, just so the board knows.
Rather than go through it exhaustively, Mr. Peck, I think the determination of whether those conditions, which obviously the judge dispensed with, made no remarks or special instructions involving a remand to your board, I think are matters that should remain off the table. I think most of them have been resolved, but I think a final dictation in this venue. I, for one, wasn't prepared to offer an opinion on all of them. Some of them are administrative. The D will, I kind of view as John's recommendation to give you ultimately. So I think it should remain on conditions or stipulations three and seven unless Attorney Clary feels otherwise.
I would agree with that. The remand was on two specific conditions. I would stick with that.
Okay. Fine. We do have a draft motion, and if the board has had a chance to review that draft motion, if anyone wants to make that motion, feel free. If you have a alternate motion, you could make that motion.
This is a, I'll make that motion.
Okay.
Essentially, the draft motion with a couple minor changes.
Yeah, could you read, Tim, if you don't mind, could you read the draft motion?
Yep. I move, in accordance with Planning Board Site Plan Approval Decision for Proquip Rental and Sales, Inc., 143 Plastow Road, Plastow, New Hampshire, dated 19 June 2019. That said board issued a final decision...
Am I?
That said board issued a final decision without any conditions precedent necessitating board involvement. That is, the placement of the monitoring wells was to be determined by the engineer, but without the need for the review by the planning board. Note, the board takes the foregoing action based on custom practice and/or intent. The subject conditions, and I would add three and seven to the draft motion, were ministerial only, required no further involvement or action of the planning board, and were essentially check-the-box conditions, which the planning board chair would unilaterally endorse the site plan. And I would add, furthermore, the board has accepted the final report from Keach, from, I should put his proper business name in there, not just his last name.
Okay, Dee, did you get all that?
I did. I did, thank you.
I think you just added a couple of things to the motion that's in our template.
Yes, I got it all.
Okay. Do we have a second for that motion?
I'll second it. I'm sorry, was that Ms. Hart?
Yes.
Thank you.
Francine has seconded that discussion. If you disagree, speak up. It's a little complicated to review, but basically, now Tim has added the two stipulations. It's focusing on those two stipulations. However, it does have a sentence that said that the board issued a final decision without any conditions precedent. So that would mean none of the conditions, not just two and seven. Is that correct, Tim?
Yes. It says, "Without any conditions precedent necessitating board involvement."
So in other words, we're saying, we're telling the court that not only do we believe that three and seven are ministerial, we're telling the court that the other 12 were also... Although the court didn't ask us that question, we're, as Mr. Cashel put it, we're putting it to rest. Okay, sorry, Mr. Keach?
No, I was just slotting a fly. Bah, actually.
That's all we needed right now, a little humor, Steve. Thank you.
This is Tim again. I just... Let's turn it on. Added changes were sufficient for, in his mind.
I think that motion is perfect.
Great.
Well done.
Okay, could you just clarify that again? I'm not following. Are you changing? Are you leaving it the way it is?
No, leaving it the way it is.
Okay.
Well, I mean, whatever I read.
Okay. Why don't we have Dee read the motion back, just to make sure we're all on board here? It's a long motion, so pay attention.
Okay, the motion was made by Tim Moore. In accordance with the Planning Board Site Plan Approval Decision for Proquip Rental and Sales, Inc., 143 Plastow Road, Plastow, New Hampshire, dated 19 June 2019, that said board issued a final decision without any conditions precedent necessitating board involvement, i.e. the placement of monitoring wells, was determined by the intervenor in consultation with the towns consultant engineer, but without the need for further review by the planning board. Note, the board takes the foregoing action based on custom practice and/or intent, and the subject conditions three and seven were ministerial only, required no further involvement or action of the planning board, and were essentially check-the-box conditions, following which the planning board chair would unilaterally endorse the plan. Furthermore, the board has accepted the final report of Keach-Nordstrom Associates.
Okay. Everybody understand the motion? Any discussion?
And it was seconded by Ms. Hart.
Thank you. Any discussion by the board on the motion? Anyone?
I just want to make an added comment. This is the first time since the Anthony's started this court case that this board has actually talked about this case. This is the first time I've seen Mr. Clary. There have been numerous times that myself and Jim Peck tried to ask questions about this case. We never got any updates. My vote is going to be no.
Thank you. Anyone else from the board wants to comment? Okay. There being no comment, then I'll call for a vote. Take a roll call, Dee?
Jim Peck?
Yes.
Tim Moore?
Yes.
Lori Mallett?
No.
Jeff Adams?
Yes.
Francine Hart?
Yes.
Your vote is 4-1-0.
Okay. So the vote is 4-0-0, right? 4-0-1, 4-1-0?
4-1-0, yes.
4-1-0, got it. Okay. Is there any other comments to be made by anyone? It's only quarter of 10. Come on.
We have three other items.
We have other items on the board, on the agenda. Speak up if you want to, anyone? No? Okay. Then I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Moved by Francine. Any second?
I'll second it.
I don't think you need a motion to close a public hearing. I think the chairman has closed it.
There is one in here, but, so we'll just go with the flow here.
Yeah, you didn't do it on your first one. I just want to make that point of order.
It's in the staff report to move to close the meeting.
Close the meeting?
Yeah. It's right here in the staff report. So we have a motion and a second. All in favor? Let's do the roll call.
I did not hear the second.
I seconded Dee. Lori Mallett?
Lori Mallett seconded it.
Thank you.
All right. Roll call, Dee?
Jim Peck?
Yes.
Tim Moore?
Yes.
Lori Mallett?
Yes.
Who's voting on this one? Oh, Jeff Adams?
Yes.
Did we hear from Francine? I'm not sure.
I don't know.
Okay.
Yes, I did, thank you.
So 5-0-0, we've closed, we've closed the public hearing. Thank you to Attorney Clary and to Mr. Keach for your input. We appreciate it.
Thanks, guys.
You're good.
Okay, the meeting's not over yet, so we have other issues, but you're welcome to stay on. I don't think he's staying on.
I'll sign off, too.
Okay, thank you. Are you going to stay on, Mr. Clary?
Oh, I'm going to sign off.
Okay.
Good night, Mr. Clary.
Thank you.
I'm going to ask for a five-minute recess here, since I need to go visit the little boys' room.
I was going to say, what you've got left here should take you five minutes.
I was going to say, what you've got left here should take you five minutes.
We'll be back in five minutes, Dean.
Make the meeting start again.
Okay, all right, I'm starting the meeting again. We're back in session here in Town Hall. We took a break after the two long hearings. The next item on the agenda is old business, and we have Route 125 corridor study. And we have a proposal I think we all got copies of, which, you know, you can read if you haven't read it. It's, what, two or three pages? And is anybody here to talk to this?
No, at the belief of the board had requested a copy of the proposal so that they could make a determination as to if they wanted to hire resilience planning and design or if they wanted to try to take it on in-house. The total of the scope of work that you have there in front of you is $51,000. $51,000, 5-1.
Okay. And
Mr. Chairman, may I ask a question?
Go ahead, Francine.
If we approve this, does that imply that all of the phases will be done? Or can we have one phase and not the other? Or how does the contract?
How much are you doing?
Can I, can I?
Choose whatever.
I didn't quite hear what you said.
You know, before we get into the cost, you know, talking about breaking it down and possibly voting on this, I just want to bring it to the board's attention that Tim Moore and myself, in preparation for tonight's meeting, you know, talked, not at length, but we had a serious discussion in reviewing this proposal. And for communities that have, say, an infinite amount of money to disperse, conducting a corridor study like this is one thing. I, and, Tim, please interject whenever you'd like, but it's a serious amount of money. I don't know if the town wants to expend this type of money on a corridor study, when in fact, I just want to bring out some fun facts. Route 125 and the zoning within the 125 corridor is well-designed, well-established, understood what uses are allowed there now. The whole idea behind an overlay mixed-use district is for the town to decide, and it would be through planning board analysis and presenting it to the public at the annual town meeting. It's really a matter of what uses, new uses you may want to introduce or would like to introduce to create that mixed-use development. So Tim and I were talking about the possibility for this being a workshop item and for this board, when the opportunity arises, when we do have workshops.
Lost you, John.
When the board does have regular
You keep dropping out and I can't hear anything you're saying.
Uh-oh. How about now?
You're fine for a little while, and then you drop off like whole paragraphs.
Okay, I'm going to shorten it up so that, you know, I don't want to go on and on here. What I'm saying is that we may want to take this issue up in the form of a workshop discussion item, have more information dispersed to board members, and, you know, decide after one or two workshops, discussing this overlay district, if we do, in fact, want to contemplate moving in the position of hiring a consultant or determining that we can do this, we can do this on our own.
Okay, a comment from Lori? Hold on, Lori?
I have a question for you, Dee. We just did the master plan update, and I'd like to know if resilience has been paid in full for that.
Did you hear the question, Dee? Frozen. Dee? Tim, can you hear us?
Now, everybody's disconnected. The connection went out.
Great. I, you know, we shouldn't be talking, but I tend to agree with John.
I do, too. Yeah, no, I don't think we should have somebody right now.
Yeah. Given the town's financial situation.
We didn't budget any master plan this year.
What we kind of concluded was that $51,000 is a lot of money to spend on this, and as John pointed out, it's not like we have a lot of money.
While you were gone, we kind of lost you there for a while, so we heard the tail end of what you said, Tim. I think the consensus in the room is that we do want to make this a workshop item, and we're not ready to pull the trigger on anything here. We can take this back, and we can get more information, and I suggest we move it to a workshop sometime in the future. I don't know exactly when, we can put it on the agenda.
Jim, I would like my question answered by Dee.
Oh, we have a question for you, Dee.
Dee?
She heard you.
Has resistance?
Dean, they can't hear me.
Has resistance been paid in full for the master? Resilience, excuse me. I'm the one that's resistant, no. Has resilience been paid?
You just said yes.
Oh, okay. Thank you, sorry, sorry.
The record will show that Dee nodded yes. Thank you, Dee. Okay, so we have a consensus there. We can just table this and move on.
Yep.
Okay, good, that's great. That's easy. Let's move to new business. We have a simple one. We have a bond escrow release, and I think we all have it. There's a motion, draft motion, one and two, relative to, Dee, why don't you just comment on Taurus?
I'd love to, but I don't think you can hear me.
Yeah, we can. No, we can now.
We can hear you.
Phew, okay. This plan has been done for quite a while. I have been chasing them for quite a while to ask them to request to close out their bond and their escrow, because I need the request from them in order to do it. But I have checked with the review engineer on that one, which happened to be Fussin' O'Neill, and they have no outstanding invoices. I have the final report in the file from Steve Reichert of Fussin' O'Neill saying that there's no outstanding issues. I've checked with Mike Dorman, there's no outstanding issues. And there haven't been since PetSmart was done. And it's time to release the bond and clear up that account.
Okay, so that being said, somebody want to make that motion? Motion one?
There's two separate motions. Thank you.
I, two separate motions. I didn't print those out, so Jim, if you could read the motion? Oh, you want me to read the motion? Okay, hold on.
I like to make the motions.
I move that the escrow monies in the amount of $111.19 being held for the site development at 5-11 Plastow Road be released and returned to Taurus Investment Holdings and the account closed.
Let me have the
I need a second.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have a second from two people. I'll give it to Tim. Tim, you got it? Assuming you did second it, so. Okay, I need discussion on this. There being none, I call for a roll call vote, Dee.
Jim Peck?
Yes.
Tim Moore?
Yes.
Lori Millet?
Yes.
Karen Robinson?
Yes.
She said yes.
Francine Hart?
Yes.
Okay, 5-0-0. Okay, we have another motion.
I get it.
You got it? Here you go. Lori's going to make the motion.
Okay, I move that any bond monies and any accrued interests being held for the site development at 5-11 Plastow Road be released and returned to Taurus Investment Holdings and the account closed.
I'll second.
Okay, Tim has a second. Any discussion? There being none, roll call vote, Dee.
Jim Peck?
Yes.
Tim Moore?
Yes.
Lori Millet?
Yes.
Karen Robinson?
Yes.
Francine Hart?
Yes.
Thank you.
5-0-0, thank you. Now I lost my agenda. Are there any other items for the agenda?
Yeah, review and adoption of the 2020 to 2025.
It was just the CIP, Tim.
Okay, yeah, the review and adoption of the CIP. Tim, you want to talk to that? I don't think I've seen it, so I can't vote on it, but go ahead, Tim.
I, when we made the agenda a while back, I had hoped that they'd have something ready to at least review. I apologize, I didn't get that ready. So I move that we just, we table this item until the next meeting.
Okay, I don't think you have to move, we'll just table it. Okay, I did find my minutes, my agenda, sorry. And we're looking for any other communication updates from Mr. Cashell, or from Dee, or Tim, or? Anyone have any updates?
I don't have anything except to suggest that folks take a look at the NHMA website. There's a lot of webinars on there. A lot of the training has gone to webinar platforms because they're unable to have meetings. So you might want to check out on there. Most of them are free. They are during the day, so I don't know if that causes an issue for people, but they're very interesting and they're very informative.
I just want to make sure that we're clear. The next scheduled meeting is July 15.
Yep.
And in all likelihood, we'll be doing pretty much what we did this evening. Those who can zoom in, to zoom in again, and those who really like being here and more comfortable being here, will be here. Is that all right?
I'm okay with that. I know Dean's going to be constantly working on this, hucky-puck. But we, you just can't hear. I don't know if you got more than one of these that would help, or?
This situation will hopefully be resolved tomorrow.
Okay.
We have some installation work pending that we could not arrange in time for this meeting. I'm anticipating that we'll have that resolved tomorrow.
Right. So I, I mean, I basically thank everybody for their patience. And, you know, it's really a little stressful not being able to hear everything. I mean, I have a hearing problem to begin with, so it's helping things. But I think we made our way through the meeting. I had one other question to raise with Tim. We, my understanding is you received a letter from someone who wants to be an alternate? Should that be raised now, or what's your opinion on that?
We did get that letter. I think we, it was from Mr. Anthony. And I think we all concluded that we really couldn't take any meaningful action on that until after the court case was resolved. So we have the letter on file, and I think that's where it needs to stay until we get the final court decision.
Okay, and you're saying because we're involved in a court case, there's conflict of interest, or exactly what are you saying?
Well, yeah, exactly. I mean, the court, since the Anthony's are the ones suing the town, yes, I mean, it definitely be, certainly could be construed to be a conflict if we do that, so. If it was, you know, just Joe Smith down the street, then, you know, that would be fine, but because Mr. Anthony is also subject to
I just wanted to make sure that the board was aware of that decision. Does anybody have any comments on that? Okay. Any other, Mr. Cashell? One more.
I just want to thank Dee for all the work you put into this meeting. This is the first go-to meeting, virtual meeting, that the board conducted. You know, these take a little getting used to, but it's one thing we're all going to have to get used to, because this will probably go on for quite some time. And I really believe the next meeting and the following meetings will really get better and more comfortable at it. I've had a lot of planning board Zoom meetings now, and I actually like the format. You know, I'm kind of hoping that it would stay available even after the fact that we're through this COVID situation, because it makes everybody more mobile, and I don't think it keeps anybody at all from participating to the degree that they should be. And I think it actually allows people or provides more concentration of those attending the meetings, whether you're here in Town Hall or you're zooming in virtually. They do work, and you can get all the work done that's necessary to get done by a planning board or any other board or commission municipally.
I think you would greatly appreciate it in the wintertime, too, when you don't have to go out in the cold or the snow or the slush, when you can sit home with a cup of cocoa.
Yeah, in front of the fire.
I just want to add my thanks to Dee and to Dean, too. Dean's still here.
Absolutely.
Dee and Dean.
Thank you very much.
Dean, Dean, whatever.
Thank you, thank you.
The two of you, I appreciate that. But it's comfortable here in Town Hall. I think if some of the other members feel comfortable coming in, there's room. We could fit you in here. And I think in the usual, if it's not a public hearing, most everybody is here. It's easier to hear the members. I just find it a little bit more, it's up to you where you feel comfortable, but there's plenty of room here, I think we can, we do. Plus, the other thing I was going to mention is that there has been a change. As we all know, the governor has changed the requirement of how many people can be in a room. It's not just 10 anymore, it's changed. I don't know exactly what it is.
Fifty capacity.
I think it's 50% of the, but I think the Town Hall is going to have to come up with a number, not just go with a 50%. And hopefully, I don't know, Francine, whether the Town Hall, Town is looking at that, how they're going to deal with that. Can you make any comments on that? Francine?
I believe the governor indicated up to 50 people can be at a venue, but they, we still have to observe social distancing of the six feet. So obviously, that kind of puts a big crimp on the meeting hall. If you're anticipating, I guess, a larger crowd for this particular meeting, they can do it via, you know, the webcam. And I think that's what we're going to need to do from now on, because we don't really have any other facilities at this point unless we, you know, tag, you know, the high school for the Performing Arts Center or something like that. That may be something we could look into, but.
Can we get a nameplate for Karen Robinson, too?
We already have it. It came today.
All right, all right, well, thank you all. Any other comments or anything? If there being none, I'll
Yep, just one more, Jim.
Yeah, go ahead, Tim.
Just kudos on doing a good job running the meeting under very trying circumstances technically and whatever else, so. Thanks, you did a, you did a great job running the meeting.
Thank you, Tim. I hope I make it home unscathed. Because you make a lot of friends in this job, right? All right, well, thank you all, and I'll declare the meeting closed at 11, 11 or 10?
10:50.
10, not 11.
Time flies when you're having fun. Thank you all.